Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lance Gransback. I serve as the Chair of the Select Board. With me this evening is Jack Van Welsh, Mike Betancourt, Ariella Volobov, and David Rico is on the phone, will be joining us shortly, and our Town Manager, Mr. Howard. Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Select Board. Today is Monday, September 24th. Let me go through and just notify you briefly of the next sets of meetings and hearings that we're going to be having. We will be meeting this Thursday, September 27th. We'll be holding a public information meeting, or public information session, will be held at 7:00 in McCall School Auditorium. And the topic is to hear plans for the installation, trenching installation of the 115 kilovolt line by Eversource. They're going to run a, basically there are two lines, one dead, one active. They're going to thread a third one from the power station on Pond Street in Woburn, down Pond Street, Woodside, if I get this right, Fletcher, Wildwood. No, let's see. Sorry, Woodside, Wildwood, Fletcher, Bacon, and then Main Street over to the Woburn Line. So, we will be looking at the first section of that, Pond Street to Church Street. The Eversource people will be there to explain in some detail where they're going to put the trench, how long it's going to take, and the provisions they've made to make sure that people have access to their driveways and their service is not interrupted. So that will be an information session. It will be in McCall School Auditorium at 7:00 this Thursday night. There will be a second information session dealing with a section from Church to the Medford Line. That's going to be on October 11th, same location, same time. So 7:00 PM at McCall. So there'll be two sessions, one this Thursday and then one on the 11th, describe in detail for residents who are interested the process of constructing this line. So, the Board will be meeting in our regular sessions like tonight on Monday, October 1st, and Monday, I'm sorry, they'll be then meeting in a regular, a special session with the Planning Board on Tuesday, October 9th. It's a joint session with the Planning Board. They'll look at issues on the master plan that they're working on. There will then be regular meetings scheduled on October 15th, October 22nd, and October 29th. Much of our work aiming toward preparation for the town meeting in the fall, in early November. So, we will probably have other working meetings during this period, but we have not sorted the timeline for those as yet. I don't have any detailed comments, but I'd like to welcome Brett Struckenbach tonight, I think as part of a project. He was asked to attend a Board meeting. I hope he doesn't sort of go away shaking his head, but welcome this evening. So, other Board members? If there are comments you'd like to make on the issues, current topics, notifications.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the Glenn Doherty Memorial Foundation Road Race yesterday. I'm still a little sore and apparently very out of shape, so it was helpful to know that. But Police, Fire, the Foundation, everybody did a really good job, and it was a great event, and had a record in number of participants, and raised a lot of money for a good cause. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, once again, encourage everybody in Winchester to come out and support our youth sports teams this fall. There's so many of them, and great fields in town, and whether it's young grade school kids up to high school, that it's a wonderful community bonding experience to be out, even if you don't have your own kid on the field or your own grandkid. And also always want to encourage people not to forget to utilize Winchester's wonderful businesses, including our wide selection of great restaurants, apparel, services, bookstore, et cetera. And then, for the record, could we just have the name of this wonderful student who's here this evening with a great West Point baseball cap on?
Brett, Brett Struckenbach?
I'm sorry, and what grade are you in?
Oh, I'm seventh.
Seventh, and are you at McCall?
Oh, no, I do Roxyburg, Oxford Latin, this is what.
Roxyburg Latin, that's great. Well, thank you so much, and if you have any questions, make sure you ask our Chair after.
Mrs. Welsh has volunteered to answer all the difficult and embarrassing ones. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
David, comments?
No, that's the.
Okay. The only other thing that occurs to me, I had the opportunity to sit outside the post office this afternoon trying to wait to mail some stuff, just as the junior high students were letting out. The Board last week had, or the group, Town Manager had initial meeting to implement our traffic safety study around the McCall School. I was entertained by the number of ways kids cross the streets. I don't think I saw anybody actually using the crosswalk. So, if there's any question about whether we need to rethink how people are crossing the street in that area, it's definitely a need. There was, if your parents listening tonight, I would strongly encourage you to actually see if you could try to convince them to cross at the crosswalks. I would say nine out of 10 came nowhere near it. Between cars, around cars, over cars, it was quite. Ariano has detailed the issue before, but I think he's quite correct. So, okay, that finishes the comments. I'll turn to the Town Manager's report. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Lance. As you can see in the packet, we have a recommendation for two appointments to the Disability Access Commission, and with passing those along for your information, by a familiar name, Mrs. O'Connell, who does so many great things around town, but especially in her efforts to coordinate both the Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades with the veterans associations in town. But she is asked to become a permanent active member of the commission. She's an auxiliary member right now. We're glad to do that, and a new person, Donna DePriste. We will also point to a vacant position, and the dates are in there that you can see, so.
Do we need to vote these, or are these your appointments?
I think they're Manager's appointment. We just put the vote down there, just in case we need it, so. But I think we're good. A couple of other topics I'm glad to report on. So, we heard today that the Winnie Farm land transaction closing went through, and the Bond V team, who will be putting in 29 over 55 resident units, will begin its work in earnest, we would hope, in the not-too-distant future for that development. But the good news is, as part of that, the Board had negotiated payments to the town that totaled $1.5 million. And those checks are in the mail, and we expect to receive them sometime this week. And they will go into the town as additional revenue, $500,000, of which will pay for upgrades in and around the site, up on Thornberry Road area, where we're upgrading the sewer pumping station up there that will help handle some additional flow that will come in from not only the neighborhood, but this new development as well. So, we're good to, we're happy to see that development.
And I thank those of you who've been following that since, I believe, the late 1990s, if I'm not mistaken. It's been discussed, I think, perhaps credit to Mike for suggesting we talk with Bond V somewhere along in the process, and things like that, and to Mr. Howard.
Yep.
For persistence. And power. It's been a long, been a long effort, so that's really good.
And it may be that the Bond V team would propose to come before the Board in one of the October meetings just to talk about their plans, their schedule, and wait the check.
Although now, now we're not going to know what to do with ourselves.
If you don't mind my saying, we should hat tip the Planning Board as well for working closely with them. And we have our Chair of our Planning Board in the audience today for other matters, but nevertheless, hat tip to the Planning Board.
Stand up, take a bow, yeah. We're glad to see you survived the process too.
Although I think I was Chair at the time, but anyway, yeah.
So, a good piece of financial news there. Also, last week, we want to thank Congresswoman Catherine Clark and FEMA for a grant that our Fire Department received through the SAFER program, it's called at the national level, for the funding of two additional firefighters that will come onto the Fire Department workforce. It's a descending grant that, over a three-year period, ends up positioning the town to have to assume all of the costs, but it subsidizes those costs to a large degree over the first three years of the grant. So, we thank both the Congresswoman and FEMA for its efforts at considering Winchester and its Fire Department. The Manchester Light Project continues to go on. As you know, the football team played again on Friday night, and they're actually on a pretty good winning streak. They're, I think, 3-0, Dave.
Yeah, it is the lights.
It's providing the magic, but we continue to discuss either other measures or other steps that may be taken to mitigate any light spill over to the neighborhood and other issues as well. But based upon feedback that we've gotten from the Police Department and Athletic Department, there have been no issues for any of those Friday night games, so. So, good news there. The needs assessment that the Board authorized management and a variety of stakeholders to launch out on will be unveiled on the 23rd of October. There'll be a stakeholder meeting. The report will be made available then, and then from there to the general public. But we think that the consultant has done a very nice job identifying town-wide and demographically varied needs assessment for a variety of Winchester populations, youth, young adults, and seniors as well. So, we'll look forward to that document becoming available. And of course, we're working on the warrant for Fall Town Meeting, which really is not that far away. It's probably five weeks or so, and the management team, the usual people who chip in, and Assistant Town Manager Mark Too Good and Jennifer Cafarella, together with the legal team, you know, will hopefully have a document put together that'll have, Fall Town Meeting have a number of things to consider when they convene. So, that's where I.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. If not, take up matters in the audience. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on an issue that's not otherwise already on the docket? Nope, hearing none? Okay, thank you. We have no Comptroller's Report. We did have Stacy's report at the last meeting, so if you want to check on the case of the town.
And I should say, we did get our free cash notification from DOR, and we'll circulate everybody for Monday night's meeting, FYI. But, good news, better, again, good financial news, better than what we had anticipated, what we usually project. So, it's a good, healthy contribution to the town's bottom line and reserves, and puts us in good position of handling the upcoming fiscal year, so.
We have no licenses. We have a hearing which is scheduled for 8:00. However, I will not be able to open that until 8:00, so we'll be taking up a few other issues within that. So, I guess if the Board will allow me to skip to the first item, G1 on the business item for the next 10 or so minutes, that is the Housing Authority at Winchester Street. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Good to see you back.
Thank you.
Would you like to approach us and update, introduce yourself and update us on the negotiations?
I will. Stephen Anderson, Chair of the Winchester Housing Authority. Since we last met, a week ago, we have met with the owner, and tenant, actually, of the unit above the one that we won by. There is no occupant of the unit that we're going, pardon me. But it was important to come to an agreement with the unit owner above, so that we could have, sorry.
Perfect timing.
Timing is perfect. We've been joined by Jack Hurd, the Director.
Jack Hurd, our Executive Director. Just in time, Executive Director. We did have, I shouldn't say we, I should say Jack Hurd had a very good conversation with the owner and occupant of Unit Number Two. They're very willing, as they should be indeed to, allow the Housing Authority to basically take control and become manager of the one and two units condominium. We now have to get that reduced to a written agreement, which we're working on. And the next step in getting that accomplished was meeting the cooperative bank, because they hold a mortgage on Unit Number Two, and we couldn't come to an agreement or couldn't do anything about it, an agreement, so far as changing any of the documents we're concerned, unless the mortgage chief bank agreed. They were very favorable, also very pleased that we would step in and become responsible in general for the operation and maintenance of the condominium. So, while we have not gotten everything reduced, oh, and I should add that the cooperative bank also very generously offered to provide a lawyer, an independent counsel, to the occupant of Unit Number One upstairs, to give them independent legal advice to be able to judge what we were proposing was, if not in their very best interest, certainly not contracted. And I think it is in their, very much in their long-term best interest. So, I think that really paves the way toward going forward. We have to reduce all of these agreements to writing. In addition to that, I've got confirmation from the Winchester Housing Corporation, the, one of the parties that were instrumental in originating this whole transaction 20 years ago, so. That they are willing to assign their interest in the ground lease, the ground lease condominium, rather complicated, that they're willing to assign their interest to the Housing Authority, which really facilitates our being able to take control and operate the condominium. So, we have every expectation of being able to put those written agreements into place and proceed by taking an assignment of an interest from Winchester Savings Bank, and following a grant from the Select Board for $250,000, using the first $50,000 of that to buy the unit, and using the remaining $200,000, which we think will cover all hard and soft costs to rehabilitate and really reconstruct our unit and put it back into service as a rental, low, low-income rental unit.
Richard?
Well, as I mentioned the last time Jack and Steve were here, this is something we've worked on for a while. We've actually had several meetings with the bank, and it looked like it was not going to be pulled together. But then Steve and Jack went back in again, sharpened their pencils, took a really good, hard look at the unit, have done this other legwork around the, you know, the condominium regime of the building. And, you know, I think it's a great idea that they'll step, as they're proposing, step forward with a management plan. As Steve mentioned last week, it's something that would be very beneficial to the neighborhood. The outside, as well as the inside of the premises, could use a little bit of attention. And I think it would benefit the neighborhood for the Housing Authority to be a co-owner here, and somebody who's overseeing the overall condition of the property. So, management's recommendation here is to, is to join with the Housing Authority and authorize up to the $250,000. As Steve mentioned, a minimum of which is used as an acquisition price to take the bank out from its position. And the hope is that in putting our heads together, we may be able to save some money on the remaining estimated cost of $200,000 to repair the unit. And I think, we know Jack would manage to the bottom line on that one.
Yes, yes.
But we think it gets an active unit back on the market, you know, number one. It takes care of the Board's major obligation under its arrangement with the Housing Authority at 22 Highland. It's major obligation, but.
It's a significant part of the obligation.
Yeah. But all in all, you know, we think it's one of those win-win situations all around. And the Housing Authority, hopefully, in due time, would have a new tenant that would be able to occupy the premises, and that would be a good thing. So, management recommends it.
I just have a couple more questions. Is now okay time?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, some of these are really easy ones, and I think we talked about this last time. First of all, thank you so much for your dedication and efforts in general for Winchester in this particular field and endeavor, and also for your creativity with respect to this particular unit. So, if for no other purpose than for those listening and also in the audience, so who technically would be the owners, assuming that this was purchased?
The Housing Authority will be the owner.
Are there co-owners, Housing Authority, and anyone else?
They're not co-owners. There's one owner.
Okay.
Of the second unit.
Right, okay.
And they will remain the owner of that unit.
Okay. And then, as the owner of the unit, would it technically be Affordable, capital A? It would be deemed affordable housing, the unit? So, there would be like an appropriate legal document that would be filed with the registry, I guess, to that effect? Or there would be Town Council involved?
Technically, what happens is Jack would work with our office on a filing with DHCD to determine that it meets the state's housing guidelines for low and affordable income.
But affordable, capital A, like affordable housing?
It's low income, as Jack says.
Low income, so within the state guidelines of lower.
So, it becomes a subsidized.
Low income, not the affordable housing with the capital A that we usually, that we've been discussing?
It would be registered as an affordable capital A.
Technically, the property as sold was low moderate. We will be low, that's our charter, that's our, we only meant to low.
But low still qualifies as affordable, capital A?
Yes.
If it's de-restricted, and it's going to be de-restricted.
So, it's not like a certificate or whatever? So, okay, okay. And but, and will Town Council or who will handle the legal work to ensure that the deed manifests whatever language is required?
That would be.
Through the Housing Authority?
It would be Mr. Greco, who works with the Housing Authority on their legal side, and would be Mr. Crager on our side.
With our, okay. Excellent, excellent. Okay, great. Thank you.
I should point out that we do, you may likely be aware, we own three, four other similar units, what we call managements within our management budget in Winchester, which have low income. So, it'd be the same exact idea. We have a management budget, maintenance and everything that comes out of that a certain percentage, so it won't, it'll just be added to what we have already.
To that inventory, sure.
We'd like it to be bigger, but it's, at the moment.
Of course, yeah.
It's four units. We have other family units that are state-owned, which we call 705. So, these, management is just the ones that, over the years, working mostly with the town, Winchester Housing has acquired. So, it'd be under the same management structure.
Great, great. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Is the unit two, is that, that's affordable too, correct?
Ownership, it's affordable as an owner.
What's that?
It's owned.
It's owned, but it doesn't qualify as affordable because it's actually low and moderate, and it's allowed to, up to the moderate level of income.
Right.
So, I think that disqualifies it until the condominium structure...
Right.
...that these units are part of is redone. And that's a, that's a possibility in the future.
That's what, what I was thinking, is it would be great if you had the opportunity to acquire, you know, the other, the other unit, and you control the whole.
Well, we'd have to do that if the opportunity arose.
And is that one restricted on, you know, appreciation, like what it could be sold at?
That's right.
There's a formula that changes from year to year, if they were to sell, yeah.
Questions? The other piece of this transaction is we have to retire the lease to Twenty-Two Highland?
That's correct.
And where is that?
I, I was in the middle of drafting that.
During the process of doing that.
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe that Twenty-Two Highland was listed as one of the affordable units that we were credited with. I don't, in fact, we're transferring that, or basically moving it over, but I don't know whether that has to be withdrawn, and then a new affordable unit registered with the state as part of your transaction.
I'd have to look into that.
I'm guessing we get rid of that lease and get rid of that affordable unit, and then add this unit under the Housing Authority's purview.
We'd definitely be adding this unit, I guess we'd have to look back, I'm not exactly sure we can find out, since the unit's been empty for five or six years.
Yeah, the Twenty-Two may not no longer be listed.
It is probably, I would think, but we'll have to, we could check that, whether it actually is on the inventory or not.
If it's in the inventory, it'd probably have to be taken out, because it's not clearly been used.
That's a good question.
Mike?
Thank you again for carrying through this great opportunity for the town, appreciate it. And I don't remember if I got an answer to this question last time, was there an insurance claim made on the unit when the water pipe burst, and then that just returned to the bank?
It was, yes.
Okay.
The claim was made and collected by the bank.
Okay.
Which is used to, basically, to got the, probably about eighty percent of the unit, just rip it out to the studs.
Rip it out, okay.
Remove all the damaged material.
So, we've also got the benefit of that claim being applied to the unit as well?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So, we need to, we should vote the allocation of the one.
Yeah, my recommendation is to vote up to that amount from the Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, so let me take stab, the Chair would accept a motion to allocate fifty thousand out of the Select Miss Trust Fund for the purchase, and up to an additional two hundred thousand for renovation of the unit, to the total of two fifty, and that to be allocated to the Housing Authority for the unit at Winchester Street.
So moved.
To that effect. If that's committed to that, clarification is accepted, if that's what we need to do.
Yeah, second.
Seconded. We haven't further discussion. All the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, ayes have it, five of. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To you and to Richard again, yes.
Appreciate how you're...
Good arrangement, takes care of several problems.
Yep, thank you.
And many thanks to Richard Howard for really being, really, more than the grease.
He's on our roll tonight. This is a third or sort of fourth thing we've had that's been working out favorably. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we have a hearing, it was advertised for eight o'clock, it's now a little after that, so I will formally open the hearing. This is a hearing on the transfer of license from Pairing Wines, Pairings Wine and Food LLC to HPL Inc., doing business as Pairing Wine and Food LLC. So, the folks with, John is at the table. Good evening.
Good.
You would, you'd like to kind of introduce yourself and your, yeah, things like that. Tell us what you would like to do, this is straightforward transfer, I assume.
Sure. Let's get together here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Manager, fellow Select Board members, my name is Dennis Benson, I'm the attorney representing HPL Inc., which will be doing business as Pairings and Wine, Pairings Wine and Food. To my right, I have Hugh Lee, and to my left, I have Lon Lam, who will be purchasing the business. So, we're seeking a transfer of a retail package, all alcohol license, as well as a food vendor license to HPL Inc., DBA, Pairings Wine and Food. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background about my client, Hugh Lee, who will be managing the business. So, Hugh's journey began back in Vietnam, back in the early nineties, when he worked for Johnny Walker and Hennessy, a bottling plant in Vietnam. He later came to the US on a student visa, he was sponsored by his uncle, who's actually in the room today, back in two thousand and one, to attend Cambridge College, where he graduated with a master's in business. Prior to that, he had graduated from the Economic University back in Ho Chi Minh, Vietnam, with a bachelor's in business management. He returned back to Vietnam in two thousand and two, and he came back to the United States in two thousand and ten, where he began working for John's Liquor Store in Winfield, where he was a store clerk. And soon after that, he began working in the banking industry, both for Citizens Bank and currently for Bank of America as a lending officer. So, he spent most of his life working in customer service, sales, dealing with the public, but more importantly, this is a, an opportunity, economic opportunity for his family, that he has been thinking about for quite some time. And it's a very special opportunity, and he takes it very, very serious. He, he plans to, to operate the business in the same way that both Laurie and Ray Schofield, who are actually in the room today, currently own the business, in the same way that they have been operating the business. They hope to keep majority of the staff that are there now, maintain the same concept, as probably many of you know and have visited the store, that, you know, they have many wine and cheese tastings at the store, and they carry many select imported wines, as well as spirits. So, they hope to, to continue to build the business in that manner, to service the local community in a very respectful and professional manner, and they look forward to this opportunity and the board's hopeful approval.
Mr. Howard, the staff has reviewed the application and the issues?
Not at all.
Not at all, okay. Questions from the board members?
Just, you know, welcome to the community of Winchester. I mean, we have a great and vibrant town center, the store that you're looking to purchase is, is very close there, and we have a great community, and that's a well-loved business. So, congratulations, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to echo my colleague's comments. First of all, thank you so much for your wonderful representation of the clients, you gave us really very helpful information. And I'd like to echo my colleague's comments to, to welcome you to Winchester, maybe you're already pretty familiar with it. You guys live here, right? Is it Franklin?
It's Malden.
In Malden, okay. I couldn't tell about that, oh, okay, about the address, because I didn't see the town. So, I've been to Ho Chi Minh City, and it's an exciting city, it's a lot bigger than Winchester, but, but in any event, we know you guys are going to be successful, because it's a fantastic business. And thank you, current owners, I guess, for investing in Winchester, and, and for you guys believing in Winchester and investing, because it's a, it's a great business, and as you pointed out, very well-loved by many people in town. So, thank you. Thank you for believing in this town.
Just wanted to say the same thing, thank you and, and welcome. I know a lot of people in town appreciate that you're going to keep this great business going and, and keep it alive. So, just one question for you, on the lease for the property there, when does that expire?
Good question. So, we hope to take over the business on November first, and the lease with the additional options will let, will expire in two thousand and thirty, so it's a choice in time.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one five-year option, and the lease right now will run out in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
More further questions from our board? Open the floor, are there comments from the public on this lease trans, license transfer? Okay, there you go, I'll close the public part of the hearing, unless, unless there's questions from the board or take the motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a transfer of license to HPL Inc., doing business as Pairings Wine and Food. The licenses being, you have a Victorius license, as well as a?
A food vendor license.
Package, a food vendor license, and the package store license for all alcohol?
Second.
Seconded. Any further questions? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, ayes have it. Congratulations.
I may, I just wanted to point out that, this is actually my, I generally do work in Boston, in Cambridge, I'm from Cambridge, and I just wanted to point, Mr. Manager, that you have a wonderful staff, very professional, and was very helpful.
Appreciate that, Council, I'll let them know.
It's great, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
And I congratulate you.
We should note that Laurie and Ray have been at it for a while, they've been at it for all the years that I've been here as manager anyway, and I start in from time to time, not often enough probably, but extremely helpful, and I've been great at running that business.
We were, yes, Laurie, thank you, welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, really? Yes, the same to me.
So, I, I hear you're opening this evening to host us after a meeting. Maybe tomorrow night, oh, well, okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll call you at home.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck.
The star's still over till nine.
Okay. Our next order of business is Herb Diab and the consultants on the initial work on the Winchester Master Plan update. Diab, if you'd like to join us. Your guests. Well, Diab, I'll let you, while you're setting up the projector, I'll let you introduce yourself and your guests.
My name is Diab Jerius, I'm Chair of the Planning Board, and I apologize for my, my dressed-down Friday's appearance, I wasn't expecting you to be at the table. So, as I'm sure you're all...
The camera's to your back, you're saying?
Well, but there's that one right there, you always see.
I want to see what your T-shirt says.
Oh, it simply says, never trust an Adam, they make up everything. Science nerd. So, as you all know, the Planning Board is setting out on the great journey of getting our new master plan going, and we have contracted a team of experts to help us with that. And today we have Jen Goldson of...
Jam Goldson.
Jam Goldson right here. And Bob Mitchell?
Right.
Thank you, oh, got it right, excellent. And so, they're going to give a brief presentation on their role in getting the master plan up, the process of developing the plan, gaining community input, and then at the end of this process, coming up with a workable master plan. I'll turn over next.
Thank you for having us here, I'm Jen Goldson, and this is my colleague Bob Mitchell. We'll be introducing ourselves in a little bit more detail, but I, I wanted to let you know why we asked to be on your agenda this early in our process. It's really so that you, we can all be introduced to each other. And I know that you know this process is going on, I wanted to walk through a bit of the schedule, so you know what to expect. And I also want to ask that, at certain phases of the project, that we come back to you to give you updates and get your feedback on, on key pieces of the process. But tonight, it's really just an introduction. And so, with that, I'll introduce myself, I'm Jen Goldson. I started a small company called Jam Goldson about twelve years ago, and I do community planning and preservation work, almost exclusively in Massachusetts. And we've assembled this team, as you can see, it's made up of four different consultant groups, and one is Bob Mitchell, who he'll introduce himself in a, in a moment, he'll be focusing on the zoning and land use pieces. Tool Design Group has done work in Winchester already, and they're focusing on the circulation, transportation, mobility piece. And then RKG Associates, you'll see Eric Halverson and Jahangir, and they'll be focusing on land use and economic development and public facilities. Now, just because we separated it out with the different consultants, doesn't mean we're not thinking of the whole thing altogether. And I want to talk a little bit about the, the structure that we've put in place to make sure that all these different consultants aren't only thinking about their one little piece. But with that as an introduction, let me have Bob introduce himself.
Thank you, Jen. Well, good evening, everyone, happy to be here at this initial start of the master plan process. As Jen said, I'm a consultant, I've been doing my own consulting work for the last eight years in planning, land use, zoning, for mostly cities and towns around Massachusetts. Master plans, comp plans, visioning plans, rewriting zoning, all of those kinds of things that every city and town deals with. I was previously the Special Assistant for Sustainable Development for the State of Massachusetts, and then longtime planning director for the town of Amherst, and planning director and planner in other states, and faculty at the Mass Amherst, teaching planning for twenty years, and now helping up with other planners and planning firms, and doing work for a number of communities around the state, and happy to be part of this, and we'll be working, as Jen said, I've worked, generally I've worked together, do the work, so we've always had this work and style, and, and we like it, that's why we're back together again.
We always look for an excuse to work together again. Oh, I'm not used to this, here we go, hold on, now you just saw the whole presentation. There we go. You know, I'm a, I'm a map person, and anytime...
Just click the...
Yeah, I'm actually realizing that I can just scroll it, too.
You can scroll anywhere you want.
Yeah, and I'm not used to this kind of, anyway, so bear with me if that happens again. So, your last master plan, your full master plan, I know there was an effort in twenty ten, two thousand nine, twenty ten, that wasn't completed, but your last full master plan was done in nineteen fifty-three. And so, as you can imagine, we haven't crunched all the numbers yet, but we're sure that a lot's changed since then in Winchester. And so, part of our job is going to be to figure out, well, what has changed? And we'll be going back through your old plan and seeing, maybe some things are even still relevant. Sometimes we're surprised by how much is still relevant in terms of goals. And so, that's part of the, the big picture of what we're doing. So, what's changed, what remains the same, what do community members in Winchester value about the community, and how do they envision the future? And so, just in general, a master plan is really putting you in a position to respond to change. We all know that change happens all the time, and we have a choice as to whether we shape change or react to change. And so, a master plan is a way to be proactive around that, looking at the community's physical evolution mostly, although in master plans, we also look at other things, not just physical, we look at services too, to some extent, but mostly it's physical-based. It's usually pretty long-range, ten to twenty years, and at the end, you'll have a document that's meant to help you all, and the Planning Board, and all of the other local policy decision-makers figure out, what kind of policies do we want to put in place, how might we want to change zoning, how can we prioritize the use of our funds, and the use of our human resources as well? And the type of master plan that we will provide for you is something I call systems-oriented. So, I said in the, in the first slide, that even though we have these assigned elements for these different consultant groups, I don't want you to think that we're going off into our offices and just sticking chapters together. Part of the process that's really important as planners and for the community is to give you a master plan that really considers your whole town altogether, and how it works altogether. And if we didn't do that... And if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be doing a good job for you. So, there are statutory elements that we are required to include in the master plan and that's land use. Those are the, the elements that I listed before under the consultants. So, land use, circulation, economic development, housing, natural, historic and cultural resources go together in the statute. Open space and recreation and then public facilities and services. There's a couple of things I want to say about that. One, it's not as important exactly what you call these elements, these are general areas that you need to focus on. But if you think that some of the names need to be changed, then, you know, some communities call circulation, mobility and transportation. Some communities take natural out of historic and cultural and put it with open space and rec. So I just want to point out that there's some level of flexibility and we'll be working with the community to figure out what are these elements? And how can we really get at the heart of what these elements are about? And maybe some of that comes through name changes. The other thing I want you to know is that even though there are these statutory elements, you can also have other themes that come up that really look at connecting those elements. And this is thinking in the systems approach. And these are just examples, these may not be the, the themes that rise to the top in your community. But when we go through the public engagement and our, and the process of looking at your issues and opportunities, we'll also be thinking about, are there things in this community that are rising to the top that don't fit neatly in one of these elements? But really cross over many elements and can be a way to really tie the plan together. And I don't want you to get hung up on the specific ones that I listed here, I just wanted to give you an example of what I was talking about. And I believe that, you know, each plan is, should be very customized to the community. So your community might come up with something different. Any questions so far? So the first thing we're going to do, well, actually, I skipped over the first thing. The first thing is we're going to be looking at your existing conditions. And that's what we've already started to do. And so we're going to be looking at existing conditions, where have you come from and where are you now? Looking at change over time and then trying to look at, well, what does that mean for the future in terms of trends and issues? And so that's the first phase we're in, I'll get more into the phases when we go over the schedule. But then the second thing we do is we help the community envision its ideal future. So we know where you've been, we know where you are, and we know what some of the trends are pointing to and some of the planning issues that are coming up. What we really want to understand from the community is, what does that mean for the future? What do they want their ideal future to be? I'm going to get this, by the end of the presentation, I'll know which way to turn. And then we look at, okay, so this is your vision, then how can we get there looking at what goals in each of the elements? And maybe some overarching goals as well. And this is where we really look at tensions. So the vision is very idealistic, sometimes you can see some tensions there, but often it's so idealistic that it looks like a perfect Winchester. But then when you start to figure out, well, what are the goals in each of these areas? And do these goals work together or are there any tensions between the goals? Sometimes, well, often, we see tensions between wanting to keep the community the way it is and wanting to see the community progress in some way. And that's when we struggle, and it is a bit of a struggle, but it's, in my opinion, it's a fun part of the project, of the process. Where we're really trying to figure out, we don't want to have a laundry list of all these goals that end up conflicting with each other. We want to try to work it out so that these goals can really balance and reinforce each other. Even, you know, the open space goals should balance and reinforce the housing goals, for example. And then we look at how can you achieve the vision and the goals? And this is in the third phase when we really look at, are there specific regulatory strategies? Are there physical improvements or infrastructure improvements? Is there programming and services? How can we look at those goals and the vision and help you figure out how to achieve those in the timeframe of the plan? And then after that is pulling it all together, and this is the last phase of the project. And so we will develop a five-year implementation plan that looks at all of the strategies developed through the planning process. We look at specific municipal actions, scheduled expansion and replacement of public infrastructure facilities. We need to project anticipated costs and revenues, that'd be relatively general, we're not going to go and get quotes for you, but we'll base it on some sound judgments. And then we lay out a process and a schedule, particularly around the regulatory amendments. So these are things that are all required by the statute and that's why I'm so specific here. The plan requires Planning Board approval. And it requires filing with the state, with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Those are the only two pieces it requires. Although you'll see from the schedule that we've built in a lot of public process and work with the community, work with stakeholders. And I, as I mentioned in the beginning, I'll be coming back to you at each phase of the plan to keep you up to date. Because although you don't have official approval over the document, I think that you should absolutely be in the know and have feedback at every stage. So let me just pause there and, and ask if that, if you have any questions or if that makes sense?
I have a few questions, but I'll save them for later.
Okay. Anybody else, you want to go through the schedule? Okay.
Once we get detoured, we never get back.
Okay. So the schedule, as I said, is laid out into four phases. We're in Phase One, which is looking at Winchester yesterday and today, looking at where you've been and where you are now. Phase Two is January through July, and that's looking at what could Winchester's future be like? And that's the visioning and goal-setting phase. And that's the phase that has the most heavy amount of community engagement. And then Phase Three is how should Winchester achieve its vision and goals? That also has a lot of community engagement, but it gets very technical at this stage. And so we also look to convening various stakeholders and boards to help understand the best way to look at strategies. And then the last phase, Phase Four, is adoption and finalization. And this is when we put together the implementation plan and we ask for Planning Board approval at the end of it. So I have a detailed Phase One and Two to present to you as well. Phase Three and Four will be under a separate contract, and so we haven't fleshed out those phases yet in terms of the exact schedule. The full schedule you can see is about 18 months. And Phase One is what we're in right now, we had a project kickoff meeting at the beginning of this month with the Master Plan Steering Committee. We are meeting with you tonight for Select Board Presentation Number One. And you'll see there's a Select Board Presentation Number Two in December when we're at the end of this phase. Because we'd like to present to you what our findings are from the existing conditions analysis. And then we'd also like to go over the schedule for the following phase, because we'll be gearing up for a lot of public engagement after that. So I won't go through this in detail, you have it in your packet, happy to answer questions. Maybe I won't get this by the end of it, there we go. And then Phase Two starts in January, and this is really very much focused around community engagement. And so you'll see that we have something called a co-urbanized site, it'll be an online platform that will get up and running. It'll launch in December, but it'll become active during Phase Two. And this is where we'll have all the documents related to this project, including the existing conditions report, which will be done by the time we enter this phase. We'll have an interactive map where community members can click on, you know, place a pin on the map and say, what needs improvement? What do, what's great already about this community, what's missing? And they can give lots of comments. We can also do different polling questions periodically. And there's a blog that's associated where we can provide updates on a regular basis, links to new information and the project schedule beyond there. So it'll be very interactive. You can also put little SMS signs around town, like little Realtor signs that, you know, on key spots. Could be general questions, it could be specific things, like if there's a vacant site or redevelopment parcel, you could say, what do you think should go here in the next 10 years? Text it in, and you can text it in and it goes right into co-urbanized site. So there's lots of different ways we can use this site for folks that, you know, may or may not want to come out to a public forum. We may or may not encounter them at our various tabling activities, which I'll tell you about in a minute. But they may have a few moments to text something in or click some ideas on a map or answer a polling question or just want to stay abreast of what's going on with the project. We'll also be doing, you can see it says, Spring Outreach, Tabling and Cafe Events, mostly through the spring. So we're going to be working with the Steering Committee on a list of various events that are scheduled to happen. Farmer's Market starts up in June, so that's one reason this phase goes into June, so we can catch being at the Farmer's Market. There may be other sporting events, other events at the library, we need to work on what that list is. But the idea is, there's only a certain core group of folks that usually come out to public forums when you ask them to come to you. And so we do think it's important to have a variety of ways to connect with the project and give feedback. So that's why we have the co-urbanized, the online engagement, but we also have these tabling events where we're coming to them, where folks are already gathered. And we need to think about what types of events are we talking about so that we hit different segments of your population? And at the events, we can have quick interactive exercises, materials they can take away, little business cards with the link to the co-urbanized site and ways that they can stay engaged in the process. And then you'll see the week of February 26th with a snow date the following week, we'd like to have our first public forum, which would be a community-wide event. And we would really be getting feedback on what do you see the future of this community? What's great about this community, what could be improved? And it's going to be a very general forum, but it's very important for this first, you know, couple of months of our process on Phase Two to get large public feedback. And then you'll see that we'll be having some deliverables towards the end of the timeline here and then presenting a draft to you of the vision and goals that have come out of this process and, and talking to you about everything we've learned through the process in July. And so that's the rough schedule, and that's really everything I had other than asking you a few questions. I know I went through a lot, we're pretty detail-oriented and we stick to our schedules, but for snow and that kind of thing that can happen sometimes. But I wanted to give you a heads up that it is a pretty intense process and you'll see us around town quite a bit. We'll be running focus groups in Town Hall the first week in October. And so I'll be here and other members of the consultant team will be running the various focus groups on each of the elements. And it's really meant, it's not a broad outreach at this stage, it's really, let's get folks who really know about these items, these elements, and get them to help us understand what the main issues are for each one as we're writing up these existing conditions. So I'll stop talking, I could probably talk for longer, but I won't.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming, we really appreciate it, it's so nice of you to make this presentation kind of early on and we're really grateful for your thinking of doing that and also being here tonight and your patience with us. And Diab, thank you for all your service to the town and serving as Chair of the Planning Board, longtime member of the Planning Board. So I'm predecessor to Diab, I was on the Planning Board for four years and the last Chair. And so we're so appreciative of all your professionalism and all your hard work. And I just have a few, few questions. So I kind of took off my master plan hat when I joined this board, so only temporarily though, because as any resident of Winchester obviously should be interested in the master plan, so, of which we all are, so. But it's really, really great of you guys to kind of connect with us and we really appreciate it because if I remember correctly, when we were devising the membership of the Steering Committee, a selectman is not on it for a lot of reasons, including that needs to be kind of, not too many people on it and a lot of other sound reasons for that. But so, because of that, we really appreciate you guys, you know, integrating us into the calendar, so we just sort of stay abreast of things. So have you worked in other towns recently on these, I'm just kind of curious, what other towns?
Yeah, we're just working with RKG and a, a team, it's not exactly the same team, finishing up in North Andover. Also working on a different team, there's lots of teams that are formed around these. Working with a different team, we just finished up Concord. And I'm also working on Sharon right now.
Okay.
I did some visioning work in Tewksbury too.
Yeah, okay, great.
And Bob's worked on quite a number of master plans.
So I was like thrilled with your kind of part of the name or part of the description of your business as community planning and preservation. So what are some of the preservation, just real quick, kind of items that you have experienced?
My background is actually, I started in historic preservation, that's my first degree, and then I went to planning school. So I've always kept a hand in preservation. I actually have a, a small arm, it's one person of my business. My business is very small, it's three people, plus a part-time bookkeeper. So one person focuses, her name is Laura Kreitzer, you'll probably see her from time to time, focuses on historic preservation. We do historic inventory work, national register nominations.
You guys seem like such a great team that, that you guys, and did you pull together the team?
I did.
Yeah, fantastic, fantastic. Just a couple of other ones. Also, I just wanted to say on, whether it's on behalf of the board, per the Chair, or just for myself personally as a resident of Winchester, thank you so much for caring. Thank you so much for being part of this team because it obviously, as you know from your past experience with other towns, makes a big difference and it means a lot. And you seem to be very sensitive to, you know, the fact that people are probably going to have a wide variety of viewpoints, but together we're all, you know, part of the community. And so I can already tell that, that you guys have a great kind of spirit and sense of really caring for our town and I just wanted to point that out and thank you for that. So the other thing I was curious about is, I'm familiar with master plans to some extent, I'm certainly not a planner, legal background. But, so do you think with this one, because it's obviously an enormous task, statute requires so many different areas. And I got a kick out of when you were saying what's changed and everything and that the plan is supposed to be like 10 to 20 years out. Of course, our last one was like 70 years out. But, but the one that, that was completed focusing on Town Center, which our Chair was involved with as well, I believe, that actually was really important for our Center Business District zoning. And so it just focused on a region, but that was, was really important to, towards the future of Winchester. And then there's been other ones that are regional, like the Triangle Master Plan, sort of North Main Street. So I was just kind of curious the way you guys see, obviously, the task list is huge, so I'm not saying it should be or shouldn't, I'm just kind of curious. Are you guys, in addition to all these other topics, are you going to focus on certain regions as well, like say, North Main Street?
I guess, I know, I'm not trying to skirt your question, but my answer is it depends. So I've been involved in, in North Andover is a good example, where we ended up taking deeper dives, we called them. And one of the deeper dives was geographic based, it was for their downtown area. Another deeper dive had to do with water, watershed issues, so it was not, I mean, it was geographical in the sense that it dealt with the watershed, but it wasn't a neighborhood per se. So it really, I, I view this as a journey and I don't know exactly what, I have a sense of what the end product will look like. But I don't know exactly where the deeper dives will be or where the, the systems links will end up being.
And of course, that doesn't mean that the Planning Board won't be doing those things as well either simultaneously or in addition or if it's not possible. So it's not mutually exclusive, I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, but can I just answer one, I'm a little more part of that. I already get a sense that the North Main area, North Main Street area is going to end up being critical for us to look at.
Near and dear to my heart, and I think Diab's as well, we'd love to at least beautify that area, those businesses have committed to this town, fantastic businesses, but it just seems like there's kind of silo developments and it'd just be great if there was, you know, just maybe more trees and sort of something that sort of organizes the width of the road a little bit more coherently so that it looks like the town is also, you know, acknowledging that investment by all those businesses and the importance that it is to Winchester, like an extension of Town Center.
Right, and that's a, that's the type of example where you could use that geographic area and weave it into lots of elements. You have economic development.
And zoning.
Land use.
Zoning.
And transportation, I think all of those will be important elements to think about.
Great, so maybe that would be a deep dive, okay, two other quickies.
If I could just add one thing, I, the first phase of this project will help answer that question because in the first phase is when things start bubbling up in terms of priorities and concerns and issues. It could be geographic, it could be topical. And then as we move forward, then we'll be analyzing, you know, the priorities and whatnot and which ones we can take a deeper dive on or which ones might be sort of on the list of the next list to do by the town itself. Or the Planning Board to take the lead on this section of that topic. So that'll play out that way.
Right, and while Town Center, of course, is never done, if you will, because of all of the interests and priority here and, and also challenges, because of the other. and also challenges, because of the other kind of focused master plan, and because of Town Center zoning, that affords you opportunity to grow that into this other area. We're talking about two other quickies. What does Co-Urbanize mean, and what do you, how is it relevant to this? I don't know that term.
Sure, Co-Urbanize is an online platform. It's a company that made this platform, and that's just their, the brand, that's their name.
Okay.
There are other types of services. It's a subscription service. So it's a private company that I subscribe to for a project like this.
Excellent. And last question, focus groups. If you guys are interested in any of our views, would we, to be, indicate an interest? Or would you kind of wait and see if you want any of our involvement, or because I'd love to be part of it.
Yeah, I think some of the Select Board is involved in some. I don't, you know, the Planner and Planning Board and Steering Committee worked on a list for us, and I don't know exactly who's on it and who's not.
Agreed.
But there's also the possibility, especially if you have a specific interest in something, to just reach out to me. And I've also been doing telephone interviews, or I can put you in touch if it's not a category that I'm focusing on. I can put you in touch with the person who is.
Okay, that'll be great. And I think I'm technically liaison to the Planning Board anyway, but that sounds great. I'll communicate with you offline. Thank you again, all of you guys, for being here.
I'll throw this out there, one other concern that I have, I don't know how it's all going to play out, but, you know, so we're in the middle of the creation of the Housing Production Plan. And within that, there's a fair amount of discussion about, you know, zoning changes, land use and whatnot. So I'm just throwing it out there for a topic of discussion. I don't know how that will play out with the two plans.
No, it's an important question to ask. So I have on my schedule on the night to go and observe the presentation that MAPC is giving, I think to the Planning Board. I'm actually not sure who, yeah.
And it's a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting, okay. So I'll be in the audience. I don't have a role there. I just want to hear what the discussion is, and I want to see if there's public comments and discussion.
We actually have it on our agenda tonight, too.
I saw that when we were sitting in the audience.
Hopefully we will, every meeting, for a while.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't know, per the Chair.
Okay, very good. And so the answer is, we want to understand what the issues are, and then at the end of the day, when, or I assume the plan will be approved soon. It sounds like it's in its final stages.
Many groups are just discussing it for the first time.
Oh, okay. So what do you think the general timeframe might be, is it's?
With all due respect, I don't think that was necessarily. Yeah, I don't think that was necessarily Deib's question. I think, if you don't mind, I think his question was more geared towards the subject matter, and how that sort of overlaps and that sort of thing, not, I don't think, correct me if I have.
He's right.
So the plan has been open to, for public, the Housing Production Plan has been open for public feedback since the middle of August. That's when we published it on our website, and we already had two community meetings over the last, Deib helped me out here. You were, you were part of our working group.
Don't trust my memory.
What, nine months? So the goal is for October 9th to be when the two boards, as you know, Housing Production Plan has to be adopted by both the Planning Board and the Select Board. So the goal is for October 9th to, for both boards to adopt the plan at that meeting, and then for submitted to DHCD after that.
So we would view a very recent plan that was approved even simultaneous to when we're starting as being public policy that you've already vetted. And we would look to incorporate the findings of that plan into the housing element and into the land use and zoning pieces. The master plan really looks more broadly than a Housing Production Plan would. So a Housing Production Plan, I haven't read the draft, but typically, I've written lots of them, and they typically focus on affordable housing and getting eventually to your 10%, or at least getting your numbers to meet Safe Harbor. And so a housing element of a master plan is really looking at residential uses in a very broad sense, and affordability and the SHI is really only one part of that. If it was an older plan that was, let's say, expired, or a number of years old, we wouldn't necessarily look at that policy as being untouchable or undiscussable because of an age of something. But if it's a brand-new plan that you're potentially adopting in a couple of weeks, we would take that and say, these policies have already been decided. And then we'd incorporate them to the extent it's appropriate, but build off of that.
Yeah, so the goal was that the, you know, the Housing Production Plan would address the, and we knew that the master plan was coming after, so we did have to work a little bit of the timing, that it would address the SHI, right, up to 80% income. But the Housing Production Plan does not address much, other than just a needs assessment on the 80 to 120%. But as you mentioned, yes, the goal is the SHI and how to get there, so.
But I'll just comment, because it'll tee up our discussion later. This particular draft includes a lot of other topics as well, that don't go to just what you said. So that's why having an open discussion about those things, and actually what, you know, iteration that there's a commonality about is something that I'm assuming will be discussed. So, so.
So following up on, you know, what I brought up, I guess this is a conflict that I have in that, you know, I look at, we're hiring you as the experts to come in and create the master plan, and, you know, rather than accept the H, the Housing Production Plan, in a perfect world, we should be relying on, you know, your expertise and your thought process as to what may be good or not good for the town as it relates to land use and zoning. So, you know, rather than accept that, the HPP, one of my concerns is, you know, to have the input of you folks, because it may not, what's in the HPP may be something that you would not advise, or you would be advising something else. So I see a little bit of a conflict in those.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. So I think that, you know, what I would suggest is that if you think that the HPP is representative of, you know, community process, and looking to address the needs that you see in the community, that you would consider approving it even ahead of our work, because it is a regulatory tool. And I don't know if there, I have an idea, but I don't know for sure if you'll get projects that will help you get to Safe Harbor. And so I wouldn't want you to hold up that protection that the Housing Production Plan provides you.
You should know, though, if you haven't read it, though, it includes a lot of other topics, with all due deference to my colleagues who are part of it, other than just the Safe Harbor topics. And so those other topics are, many people have a wide variety of opinion about, and whether or not they should be included in this plan is, I guess, was an interesting strategic decision that was made. But they may be topics that require a lot more thought and community engagement in the town, because they bear on so many other things, like, you know, for example, zoning.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah. I think there's a number of options that we're going to become aware of and present to the town on this issue. So like you say, with the other topics, particularly with the other topics in the Housing Production Plan, we may, from our public outreach, find some different.
Exactly.
You know, different recommendations or different concerns than shows up in the HPP, which we would then, you know, present to the town as, okay, well, your HPP says this, and this is what we're hearing, what we're finding out, and it's not exactly aligned. We may, on our own, because of our own professional experiences, say, well, the HPP is recommending this, but we have found that, you know, that's not really best what you do.
Because you're looking at all these other topics.
So I think we're going to have to.
That's exactly, that's what I'm looking for, is the, you know, the third-party independent set of eyes, because, you know, the HPP may be geared towards, you know, a creation of affordable housing. But I'm looking for, your group to be looking at the big picture, based upon, you know, collective experience, you know, what is overall good for the town from a master plan perspective, which may, in some cases, not align with the HPP. So that's something that I see as a little bit of a conflict, and hopefully it can be ironed out.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. The HPP can also be amended at any time. So if we do come to a point where we're finding something different, or there are other elements that are informing it, you can open that up and amend it if you need to, to create a consistency.
Yeah, I just want to say, from the Planning Board's perspective, these are all very complimentary processes, because they are essentially exploring different things. But we've always felt that the master plan will incorporate all the good ideas, we're happy to steal, and hopefully work out all the kinks, because the master plan is for a much longer-term view. So where the HPP and the master plan might come into contention, then we just, both of those are living documents that will change, and we'll just make sure that they're not.
Well, I would just note, I think those are brilliant comments, but that many things, people have a wide variety of viewpoints on. And that part of your process is sort of figuring out what are the sort of like community goals or that sort of thing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that somebody wouldn't necessarily want to have their voice heard in a town meeting kind of context if there's a zoning change on a warrant article. And that they not have that voice taken away because of some public policy that got passed, you know, eight years prior. So they are living in dynamic things, and they do affect people's viewpoints who live here, rural residents who pay taxes. And so anyway, so it seems like in some ways, kind of even just the verbs that are used, like to consider things, sort of is more constructive and meaningful than they have to do things, that they become policies or something. You know, like important, you know, values or things to consider in any given situation, as opposed to, you have to do this because somebody said you had to six years ago, who wasn't even necessarily envisioning whatever a warrant article zoning change might be.
Right, yeah, that's a good point.
My concern, Mike, you had a question?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for coming in, giving us a path along the master plan here with you. And I will say, Ms. Goldson, you're very highly regarded amongst a lot of the stakeholders, particularly in the housing community here. So I'm glad that you were able to connect with the Planning Board on this project. And we are currently working on a needs assessment project, as well as a Housing Production Plan. I think these all just inform probably what you're doing in larger scale. When we adopt the Housing Production Plan, as you said, I mean, it's a living document, and it doesn't preclude us from making other decisions down the road. It just kind of puts a framework in place so we can start addressing these housing needs really in a more aggressive way. You know, we are at 1.9% currently for our subsized housing inventory, so it's, you know, it's necessary that we move forward. And I think housing is probably going to stand out as one of the major needs of the master plan to pressure. So thank you very much. I just wanted to say, appreciate it.
Couple observations, thoughts. Well, we're really just starting on our Board to discuss the Housing Production Plan. What MAPC has delivered to us is, in my view, a really good inventory of lots of goals, objectives, strategies. It's not really, at this point, been shaped into what I would think of as a policy plan or implementable plans. And I think we're going to have to look at that. It may satisfy the regulatory requirement of the HPP needs, but in terms of sort of a coherent plan or options for plan, it's not quite there, in my opinion. So, but that's what we're going to look at in the next couple of weeks, and see where we can get to. The other observation, as Winchester does its master plan updates once about every 50 years. As you can see, 1900, 1950, 2000, we took a stab at it. We covered, we built off four pieces then, in the late 1990s, 2000. The primary piece was the Town Center update, which took five or seven years to implement, and it just exhausted us. I think it's been very good. There's the two other things that flow out of that that were really clear during the 2000 update, was it would be very useful to move that learning curve, that up Main Street into these general business districts that Jackie and Deib have been talking about, which need badly to be updated. We have a huge hole in the zoning of the other districts, which really have not been touched since the 50s, and in some cases, since the 1900s. There's, and there's a great reticence to touch them, because you get into people's housing and things like that. But we have provisions for the districts outside the Town Center that haven't been really looked at. We've dealt with it in piecemeal by using overlay district techniques, which, some of which work, some of which are dead, and things like that. I would, the other couple of things, I would encourage you to talk with the members of the Board here, probably individually. We have about a dozen initiatives going, either through staff or through here, that I think would be very useful. I think Deib's been participating. There's a Buildings Condition Survey for all the town buildings. It's been the cost for replenishment. It's available. We have set up an advisory committee for traffic and transportation that's now functional. There's a road book that documents what's going on there. We're just about to complete a Fields Master Plan, a demand-capacity study across fields that plug into the recreation piece. The production plan we've talked about, Mike mentioned the needs, sort of the social needs, really focused on all of our elderly pieces. There's a water sewer, stormwater, MS4. African, our engineering group is going to pull down a pretty long, apprehensive sort of plan for that. Schools have completed a recent master plan, and we had the Donahue Institute look at some of the things. One of the things we've learned, and then there's, a number of us are working on a financial outlook, you know, the next five or maybe 10 years, but what's the need for overrides to support operating budgets and capital improvements? A couple of things we've learned in the process of those, I mean, well, so there's a huge amount of information available. We get it through Deib, but I think each of us has been sort of spearheading some of those issues. So I would say it would be very useful, we don't have to participate in the group, but you ought to pick our brains to figure out what's going on in all those pieces. One thing I would caution you against, MAPC's data, when we looked at it in 2000, and again, when we've looked at it in the School Master Plan, tends to be sort of out of date and averaged, and really, we tend to be an outlier on things like school growth and things like that, compared to the rest of state. Their process is to massage all the data, so the Boston's don't lose too badly. It would be double-check that data a little bit before you use it. The other experience we had in the 2000 cycle was that we spent, and the consultant at the time did a very good job, spent immense amount of time gathering and grinding through data, which made very little use in the end. I mean, it's, you know, so we've got books upon books upon books of data and charts, never made a whole lot of use of it. The critical process was discussion with people in the Boards. The town runs on a lot of voluntary, volunteer Boards, and getting that group convinced that these changes, you know, are necessary, and which direction and how is really the critical thing. And I'm sure you're painfully aware, in Massachusetts, master plans, nice sweet words, nothing enforceable, right? So in the end, if the community doesn't believe in what comes out of the master plan that's on the shelf and doesn't go anywhere. So I think your, you know, Phase Two, Phase Three discussions of, you know, working with the town and basically can help them build a consensus on where to go is much more important than the data needs and the other pieces on that. So that would be the critical things to do. I think we look forward to doing a result. Winchester has a long history of building each group doing, you know, some of these shining silver silos, and some of these, they're beautiful pieces, everybody does a lot of work, and nobody ever talks to anybody, which are too busy. And I think there's some, one of the opportunities in the master plan is to begin to get at the kind of issues that David was flagging, you know, where does this plan jive with that one and four or five other pieces? It's complex enough. They've really worn a lot of attention, so good luck.
If you want to sit in on another rollout, I know there's only so many contractual visits in your contract, but that needs assessment will be rolled out to a concentrated group of stakeholders on October 23rd. Across the parking lot here at the Jenk Center, which is the senior center that the town uses, but October 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00, so. You would both meet a lot of the people that you would end up talking to along the way in your planning, and also get a first look at the recommendations that are contained in the needs assessment that has been authorized.
Okay, thank you.
Eighteen months would be great. Winchester likes to debate everything for at least five years, so this will be a record. Distinctly the case. Jackie will probably agree, yes.
Yeah, can I just ask one last question? So, Deib, this is to you. So are you, you'll probably be making presentation at town meeting, and maybe.
So are you, you'll probably be making presentation at town meeting and maybe making like a quick update about the master plan. Would you, um, I don't need an answer now, I'm just kind of like floating the idea if you guys haven't already thought about it, but you probably have, um, to either have these, um, wonderful professional folks sort of do like a five or ten minute presentation to town meeting or, um, it always seems like it's helpful to make sure town meetings like super informed, even though they're not the ones who are gonna be approving it. But just they're obviously, um, stakeholders and I think they, they, they seem to really enjoy hearing every time we made a presentation to town meeting about just learning more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the planning board and I really feel a responsibility to keep the town meeting up to date. Um, they do represent the town, they are footing the bill for this.
Right, exactly.
There's, so, um, I will certainly be making a presentation. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's a question as to whether we should, um, whether we should, uh, bring consultants in this first town meeting or maybe in spring when there's more.
Or maybe just show the timeline or something.
Yeah, so it's just, um, we haven't discussed that in detail, but something obviously is.
I just think the town meeting loves hearing your, well, I don't know, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but just about planning, they seem interested because it's their, like, you know, physical community, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just encouraged you guys to do something, it sounds like you are already planning to.
Thanks. Anything further to talk? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to the answer.
We're here every Monday night if anyone comes.
Can also watch us on TV.
Yeah, if you're desperate.
If you have insomnia.
I should have filled this up before I come, I have two more left.
We'll fight over them.
You can fight over them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can take a picture, so, we can take a picture. I have a scanner.
Thank you, Diab.
Thank you. Three things to bring up, uh, next. How do we want to start a discussion of the housing production plan?
What about twenty-two, Highline, G two?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, G two.
We need to go back on this, uh, my apologies, okay?
So in the packet is the information you saw last week as well, but we teed it up for, uh, a vote, uh, for this week, uh, to, uh, acknowledge the award, which, and that will also, uh, catch off our negotiations with the respondent.
Highland, yeah.
So you, you see the votes as prepared by the town council. So assuming you agree that we're looking to move forward on that transaction, we'd advise that you adopt the votes.
So we're looking forward to Mariano reading it?
That's the way it goes.
He's pretty quick for that, I think.
Lance and I did have a meeting with some of the neighbors, uh, last week, um, to kind of catch them up to speed on, uh, where things were at and, uh,
How'd that go?
It went well, it went very well, um, and I, I think that they were.
They were polite and they didn't throw anything at us.
How's, how's Mike, how's the owner at the top there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, uh, everybody's position is similar, but they, you know, realize that we're, you know, caught in a, in a tough spot. So, um, I think because of the nature that our, um, negotiations, um, you know, had to be somewhat, um, private due to legal nature of it, we didn't catch everybody up to speed on, um, the, so they felt that there was a, a huge jump between when we last presented the town meeting and where we are now, so.
Okay.
Uh, I think they were, um, you know.
That was good, you guys went there.
Yeah, and we used the, the culverts and, uh, what's the, the project really entail and, and kind of the evolution of it. So I think that they, they got it and, um, you know, were, um, as Nick said, didn't throw anything at us, so.
Yeah, I think we, I think we made reasonably clear to them that, uh, these are all preparatory steps. And if town meeting were to vote yes, then you'd go ahead. If for any reason town meeting says no, then none of these preparatory steps would, would carry, you know, would stop the process.
And even beyond that, um, if it did advance, I'm not necessarily advocating, I'm just saying theoretically if it advanced, then, um, it would be great if they were part of the planning board process for subdivision. And, um, we have extensive rules and regulations and, um, as you guys are aware, and, um, the neighbor's feedback would be really important.
And they did participate the last time around when the planning board had it under consideration, so.
Exactly, exactly.
And we will also, we will also be responsible for development agreement that would parallel, what can be done within the subdivisions would be the planning board's responsibility, things that fall outside of that, you know, such as the agreement for the culvert and other things, which could include, uh, some design requirements. That would be something that we would have to negotiate in parallel, so.
And, and I think that they felt better that we would maintain a level of oversight of the project through the development agreements. Um, and it wasn't just kind of, you know, handing it off to the developer, so, um, so I think, I think it worked well. But we've got a vote on this, right?
Yeah, there's two, two pieces in the new packet that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we record the following vote of the Town of Winchester Select Board that at a duly, uh, noticed public meeting of the Town of Winchester Select Board on September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, the board voted as follows with respect to the real property that is subject of the request for proposals for the purchase of Lot A and Lot B of Highland Avenue comprising a portion of the parcels identified on the Town of Winchester's assessor's map, lots two dash one seventy-nine and two dash one eighty, the property, section A, in response to the proposal for the purchase of the property submitted on September fourth, twenty eighteen by Five Points Development LLC, the successful, uh, proposer, and upon the recommendation of the town manager to issue a notice of award for the disposition of the property to the successful proposer. On the terms and conditions set forth in the form of the notice of award presented to the select board at this meeting and approved by this vote and section B to authorize the town manager to execute, execute a notice of award for the disposition of the property to the successful proposer as a force said.
Second.
Further discussion? There's a second piece to this, but that's the last one.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Any all in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose, aye, seven, five.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we record the following vote of the Town of Winchester Select Board that at a duly noticed public meeting of the Town of Winchester Select Board on September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, the board voted as follows, that the board has determined that advertising under general laws, chapter thirty B for the town's acquisition of the following parcel of real property will not benefit the governmental body's interest due to the unique qualities of the property. The land of Highland Avenue identified as area C on the sketch plan here, attached here to an incorporated area as exhibit A containing approximately six thousand and ninety-nine square feet being a portion of the land identified as Town of Winchester's assessor's map lot two dash one seventy-eight, the property. Specifically, the property contains land in a highly advantageous central location and is uniquely suited for combination with existing town owned land that abuts the property, which would allow the town to use the property for the purpose of creating affordable housing units.
Second.
Uh, further discussion, I'm asking. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes, ayes have it. It's my understanding, Richard, is directly with this then.
Contact our attorneys and proponents' attorneys.
And they can begin provisional discussions with the planning board on October twenty-third at this point. Nothing that happens until the town meeting actually approves the land swap and the resuming, I believe, okay? Good, okay. Um, so the last three items we have, we wanted to discuss housing production plan, Warren articles, and national grid. Um, let me make two suggestions, one on the Warren articles, rather than dragging through them late at night, uh, Richard reminds me that in previous years we'd have set a morning session, it's basically a working session. We don't make any decisions on the Warren articles at that time, just to chew through the details and understand them and make sure they're drafted correctly. So, uh, rather than do the Warren articles tonight, questions of the board members could be scheduled, uh, sort of a working meeting in some morning, preferably for the end of this week because time is ticking on these, uh, to get started on discussing these. Uh, is that, so I guess.
Yeah, Friday morning.
First bid is Friday morning, possible, uh, for people. We will provide as much coffee as you need. So this is just be a, basically a working session, not a decision session. And we would take the, we have a list of about six or eight of them, uh, some of which will probably vaporize, I think, but others.
I have a nine o'clock meeting unless we want to do it before that.
Yeah, I'm, I've got an early, I've got an early meeting, uh, right now.
We do it like, uh, five a.m.
Uh, a little bit much.
I'm up.
Yeah, uh, well, thank you, uh, other, other dates this week, Thursday morning? Or we could do an evening meeting too, if anybody has.
Um, yeah, I can't on Thursday morning, no, we can't do it before Friday.
Okay, you can't do it before Friday.
I'm, I'm traveling.
Okay, uh.
Monday morning?
Monday morning following the first, anything? No.
Eight-thirty?
Oh, does it disrupt?
I'm out next week.
You're out next week, oh, okay, so we, can't wait for you, but, uh, the rest of us, could we chew through the Monday morning? Make it always long day, start with a select board meeting, then with a select board meeting. You're gonna have lunch in between, uh.
Um, I have a question, so if Mariano's out next week, and I think you said not this week either.
I can do Friday.
Do Friday, okay.
We do Friday and I can, you know.
The time your meeting get over.
Well, I'll set nine and.
I was just gonna say I could do this Wednesday morning, but anyway.
Welcome.
Yeah.
So we could promise you that the substance of the stuff will be an hour, so if you start it at eight, we could get you out of here.
We could, we, we could at least bring up the ones that you're.
Yeah, but I'm not good, I'm not good until probably nine.
Oh, I see.
So either way.
Is anybody available this Wednesday morning?
Uh, I could do that.
I'm good.
Have to post them.
Oh, that's right.
It's too late to post, yeah.
Too late to post. Well, you want to do Friday at?
Well, you could continue this meeting for the purpose of.
Yeah, except that's probably.
Well, it's on the agenda.
That's right.
Uh, well, I suppose, continue, continue this.
Effectively, procedurally, you can do that.
Procedurally, you can do that, um.
I could do this Wednesday morning or else, I don't know about Friday, especially when there's different times.
Well, how about if we can continue this meeting and it's really picking up this Warren article, our exam, uh, Dave, was that good for you?
But earl- early.
Good for me.
And you said you can't do it.
Eight-thirty is the latest.
Oh, you can't do Wednesday?
No.
Oh, okay.
But that's fine.
And he's out next week.
You can do eight, you can do eight-thirty.
Or you guys can meet Friday, you guys can meet Friday.
Mariano can get out of that meeting.
Or you guys can meet Friday, it's either he's missing Wednesday or I'm missing Friday, so, uh, if you guys.
We could do, well, we could do that, we could do one of those.
Is it gonna take more than one meeting or will there be necessary to space it out, okay?
Oh, this would be a first go around, yeah, yeah. Eventually have motions and backgrounds and.
Yeah, I mean, in, in this week, yeah, just had a, you know, written, you know, I don't know, a lot of the stuff we probably don't need to discuss.
It's just, it's a first pass.
Right.
Yeah.
The structure of these things.
Mike, are you suggesting we actually look at something first?
Well, just that we, we do that.
That seems like a good suggestion to me.
Yeah.
Well, the problem is that then the staff says, well, you don't give us exact, you don't give us much direction on the, could be their topic.
We're used to that, though.
Virtuous circle, a virtuous circle of our lucky hat first.
I think it'd be worse for the workers to get the direction.
Well, we could, um, the option would be to meet Wednesday morning and start on ones and we'll wait on the ones that turn out available.
What time Wednesday morning are you looking at? Because I can dial in for, if it, it's early.
Eight-thirteen, eight-thirty, I don't know what you're.
I'm, I'm good either.
So I can dial in, I can dial in.
Yeah.
If it's that early, I can dial in, I'll be in central time zone, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jackie.
Earlier the better, and I'm assuming there'd be like an hour and a half back.
Eight, good for you, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a pity, but it's just a drop, but, so.
Tell them to take, tell them to get up earlier, ready, okay?
Well, they, they, you can only drop them off, uh, at a certain time. I can drop her off at like five a.m.
So we want to start at eight or eight fifteen? So what, what works?
Eight, say eight.
Eight's fine, that's fine.
Eight, eight, okay, so let's try Wednesday at eight and we'll, so when we close this meeting tonight, remember just to continue.
Oh, recess.
Yeah, okay, so eight a.m. here, okay.
And then, and then the idea is another one in a couple of weeks, something like that.
Not even a couple of weeks, yeah, the following week maybe to clean up some of this stuff, because we, we need to get these, this.
A week from Friday was a good.
Yeah, Friday the fifth.
Friday the fifth.
That one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
Eight-thirty in line.
Yeah, Friday the fifth in the morning.
Friday the fifth.
I, I don't know, maybe.
Okay, well, we'll see what we get.
Supposedly a way, but I don't know.
Well, these are working meetings, we will eventually have to review all the language of the Warren article and the motion and everything. And if, we can do that later in the night before we, uh, take a position on them, uh, for the meeting, but it hammer, helps to hammer them out ahead of time.
Right, I could call him.
Okay, um, I'm in, uh, national grid, um, we may want to continue that until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Richard, some updates and there's, we gotta hear a little bit.
So we do, uh, we did find, um, additional counsel. Um, we'll use Bill August to supplement, uh, review that, uh, Wade Welsh has provided to the board. Uh, but, and Bill is a very, very good resource on this, I believe, but, uh, he can't have his analysis and, uh, uh, either opinion or recommendation, whatever we'll call it, to you, uh, before the first, Monday the first, so. Uh, that's why we couldn't have it in your packet tonight. So I'm recommending that, uh, we do that, where, uh, we are getting some inquiries about, uh, single family residential permits again. Well, uh, I don't know if any of that will have, uh, come forward before the first, uh, for consideration. We could always, uh, put those on for your, uh, for your consideration that night. And or we could, under the vote that you've previously taken, uh, maybe try to short circuit that effort and, and issue some new street opening, uh, permits with the, uh, understanding that the requisite safety measures that you've referenced in your proclamation are in order and in place, satisfactory to the DPW director and our office. But if they can be held until we, we can report to you, uh, in unison on the topic and on the permits for Monday night, we would do that as well, so.
I thought we were going to, um, also hire somebody at least on a, you know, somewhat of a temporary basis or consultant basis.
Yeah, we, um, we're, I don't want to have to take on an expense that we don't need, so I think in combination with some of the research that Bill is doing.
Yeah.
And some stuff that we've, uh, come across in the meantime, we may be able to put a set of, uh, minimum baseline standards and criteria together, uh, that really kind of reflect the regulatory framework at the federal level and at the state level, so it's kind of.
Who'd have oversight over that, though, is it?
That would, uh, to determine that, uh.
Yeah, that.
That any contractor met those, that would be myself and Jay in the first instance and then you ultimately as board. That's the way your proclamation reads, that it comes to you for, uh, for approval. But we would vet all of that information in the first instance and, um, either reject outright or come forward to the board with a recommendation.
Wants to see the Bill stuff, I guess.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest maybe that we, see if we can resolve the issue on Monday based on what Bill is suggesting, because my initial understanding is he'd suggest some wording, like some changes to the wording, that would probably establish both what we can regulate and to what extent we could, and we can then figure out whether we want to go back and have it, just come to the board or go back to Richard. Or if they're, you know, straightforward ones, go to Richard if there's complex ones coming to us, so.
Has he worked with, uh, some of the other communities that adopted this, uh?
No, no.
Yeah.
But he's, we've sent them that information and, um, I wouldn't want to give his opinion, uh, yeah, you should hear it from him, but I, I think he would tell you he'd be concerned about whether or not they overstepped their authority under the state law. You know, he, it's this balance that you heard.
Yeah.
That night from, uh, from Wade about, uh, preemption and, uh,
The case law.
The requisite amount of oversight that you can have at the local level, uh, around these safety items, you know? And I think Bill would may, um, end up trying to fine tune the language that you passed that night so that he felt comfortable that you were on safe ground, um, you know, maybe even more so than, than Wade did at the time, uh, about the language that you alter, alternate, not the original language, but the language that you ultimately stitched together. Um, so I think, uh, shot story would be, I think there'd be a little bit of progress on the topic so that, uh, you would feel more comfortable, uh, saying whatever it is you ultimately say and that we then have a process and a procedure in place that, uh, that is a good thing for DPW and our office to look by.
So I think we've covered what we can cover tonight because we don't have any new information, but I would carry it over to the next meeting and presumably could debate it and resolve it at that point, Dave?
Yeah, I would just say, Mr. Chairman, I'm very encouraged to hear that the town manager and the DPW director seem to have stepped up to the plate and created some additional, um, safety measures oversight and, uh, very, uh, pleased to, to hear about, you know, the progress of, of those plans. Uh, what I would respectfully request is, you know, maybe pending the second opinion is could we just get a, uh, an insurance, uh.
Sure.
Statement of compliance, just again, I have that concern for, for the town and, and boards as, as well. So whatever we commit to, if we can get that.
We can try to roll that topic into it, right?
Yes, please, thank you. Yes, please, thank you.
And we have, uh, reached out, we've talked with, uh, National Grid management as well and told them about the board's concerns and about the level of assurances that, uh, that the board slash management would need in any circumstance where there was a new street opening.
What was their reaction to that?
Uh, they understood and I think they, uh, in some small way appreciated it, actually.
Did, did you get a sense of like, are there multiple unions? Or is it just that we fall within a geographical location with the unions that are on strike and others aren't on strike, or?
No, well, you're dealing, so you're dealing with their union, the steelworkers who have made their presentation to you, but it's for that.
There's, there's no unions on strike, they're being locked out by National Grid.
For not, forgive me.
Yeah.
Forgive me.
Okay.
What I meant was lockout, but I mean, it's not that.
It's the one steelworkers union.
Right, it's not that all the unions who work for National Grid are locked out, is that correct?
Uh, no, they have other unions that don't do this work, that aren't locked out, right? This is a particular contract within their organization.
Yeah, and maybe sort of first, we can, I mean, you'd asked last time, could we get some information on the, the network and some, I'm presuming there's a map about which company manages which section of the network and how they're connected, just, uh, to the question of Lawrence and.
This is sort of a totally separate topic, actually, but this was just to make sure that we do our job
Yeah.
and make sure that any of those issues that occurred in Lawrence and, and Andover, which was a different company, but that.
Yep. Yeah, that was the other thing that we.
Have somebody sort of look things over to make sure we don't seem to have those same issues.
Yeah, I think one of the questions.
They're really two separate questions.
One of the questions we've asked Mr. August is, you know, how do we clarify the statement we made, and is there anything else we should add to it to make sure in light of the Lawrence and, you know, and our Andover issues that we're really doubling down and making sure that they're managed safely?
Well, I think that we had discussed having, if somebody have additional oversight, I mean, I think that, uh, Jay from the DPW had said that they don't have the experience to provide the analysis of whether or not.
In the trench, right.
The work is being done in a proper way and consistent with regulations, so, you know, we seem to be, um, somewhere a decision was made to, um, do an end run around that, I mean, I, I don't know why, I don't know, you know.
Well, I don't know that we made an end run around that, I don't know that we've got the resources, I mean.
I d- I think the other thing.
I think we're part of issuing permits.
Is part of issuing permits, yeah.
No, so we would, what we said, have said and what we expect is that we get the credentials of anyone who would be working on a new line installation, uh, to assure ourselves that the minimum criteria, the baseline criteria for certifications and experience were in place. So both the contractor who would be doing certain work within the trench on behalf of National Grid and also the team that Grid would expect to be observing and, uh, signing off on the, um, on the compliance of the installation, so we need all that info. We typically wouldn't get that, but now we're insisting that that information be supplied in advance.
And just for the record, my comment last meeting was totally separate from that proclamation it related, because.
Right.
Stressing of the systems.
Exactly what you think was a pressure issue or something, so, but that somebody look at that, since we're not that, um, I don't know if these lines are kind of geographically connected or whatever, that we.
Yeah, the systems are, the systems are essentially, essentially the same, the way they operate underground, you know?
Yeah, right.
It's a question of what personnel are, uh, pressurizing and, uh, you know, Commonwealth seems to have had a particular series of unfortunate coincidences that, but, uh, what it did.
Very sad.
But, yeah, we will certainly confirm with Grid that those kinds of things are.
Great.
They're in existence.
Excellent, excellent.
And I know that, uh, you know, like there's a Vivasan for instances, uh, doing exactly what we suggested last meeting and kind of evaluating the, their, uh, infrastructure and seeing if there is exposure there.
Good, yeah.
So I think that it's a good suggestion for us, I mean, we can't take on all of this at once, but certainly to keep the conversation going about evaluating our lines and what is there.
I mean, in some ways, maybe the state, state's doing it also, but it just seems like at, at our level, we should make sure that we're doing the best we can to.
You can ask, at a minimum.
To prevent something like that in our town, correct, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we'll carry this agenda over to, uh, carry this item over to the next agenda, and we'll see Mr. August's memo, we'll get some information on insurance. And it's available, some basic information on the network and which parsh, which portions are managed by National Grid and others. I mean, ours is obviously managed by them, and they're, they're all interconnected, they're dead, same ones, okay. Uh, housing production plan, you're, you're back, okay.
Project plan.
Uh, does one of, people wanna take a two-minute recess to stand up?
Not really.
Not really.
We just want, unless, unless you guys do.
Wait, I think Mariano was a volunteer to come back, so we'll wait for him to come back.
Yeah. Um, okay, well, I'll start, I, I just thought it was a good idea to start having this.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask him to, just give us an overview of where they've been, where they're going and where we are in process, and then we can.
Okay. Sure. Excellent. Okay, thank you.
I would assume we wanna talk about this, uh, for several nights, leading up to the coverage, so we don't have to cover every half a night.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, uh, I think we volunteered you to provide sort of a general overview of where we've been, where we are, and next steps on the housing production.
Um, yeah, so, um, we've been in this process for, um, a while now. Um, we convened last year, we convened a working group, um, with representatives from this board, from the planning board, uh, from the community. Um, had about fifteen different representatives, uh, hold on, I have the numbers here, the names here, so I'm not gonna read them all, but Housing Partnership Board was represented, uh, Council on Aging was there as well, uh, there were multiple residents from different precincts, uh, and as I mentioned, uh, Planning Board, Select Board. Uh, Richard, uh, our town manager was also there, uh, we contracted MAPC, uh, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, uh, to help us with this. They have drafted, um, a large number of housing production plans around, um, their area, um, the metroli, the Boston metropolitan area, uh, for, for several communities, including, uh, Lexington, right next door, and others. We had two community meetings, um, and evenings to get, one for, uh, goals, another one to, uh, look at strategies. And, uh, those results are in the, uh, in the draft of the housing production plan. The draft went online August thirteenth for public comment and, um, public comment closed, uh, ten days ago, uh, on September, so there was a month of public comment. And, um, of course, all the members of this board have also had the, the draft of the plan, uh, since August as well, and, um, we've been giving feedback to, uh, MAPC and to our town planner, um, for this, uh, for this month, to include in the future revision of the draft, which, um, you should have received today over email, um, and it was, it was tweaked some, but, um, that will, that's what we're discussing.
And I think that, um, our public sessions that we had, uh, went very well, uh, very, um, well attended and, uh, very engaged and really informed, uh, the production plan, uh, kind of moving forward and kind of its evolution of where it is today. So I think that, um, and we did have some online responses that were kind of all over this place, um, you know, some people that, uh, still don't want affordable housing at all and, you know, made their voice heard about that and, uh, but other people that made some good constructive, uh, comments, so I think, um, it's been, it's been good so far.
Just as a point of information, the, the, there, it's not a question of whether we want affordable housing or we don't want affordable housing. Not wanting affordable housing, I understand that there's people who don't want that, but that's not one of the options available to us. The, the options that are available to us is we can either have affordable housing that we have some planning control over, or we can have affordable housing that developers, uh, file for a forty B and they get to bypass our, all of our zoning laws and, uh, build pretty much, you know, whatever they want. So those are the options available. The not having affordable housing is just, I, I know we got a lot of comments, um, online about that people, that we just don't want affordable housing, uh, by state law, that's not one of the options, right? The option is we either have control of it or the developers via the forty B process have control of it.
Not having affordable housing is where we are now, so.
So I have, I have a question on the procedural. The draft they sent, or at least the draft that I reviewed, had goals which are understandable. Then in terms of, um, quantitative objectives, number of units to be produced.
Yeah.
They had what seemed to be to be three or four variants, okay? They didn't seem to recommend one, okay? And then there were several dozen strategies, which as I said earlier, uh, which covered a waterfront of stuff. Uh, it would seem to me that they give us an inventory of what you could do without actually bringing us what I would call policy packages, you know, a goal, a particular set of objectives and a particular set of strategies that we could look and make trade-offs. What, in, if we adopt, their plan is written with this kind of s, inventory of stuff, but it's not really a, a plan. Uh, it's a, it's a document that says, here's a lot of stuff you could do, uh, what are we actually committing to? Or do we have to narrow that down and commit to a particular schedule and a particular set of, or these desirable strategies? I, I thought what they gave us was.
It, it's still a lot, yeah.
A cloud of possibilities without actually being a plan.
I think it's going to be, I, I think it's gonna be that to a certain degree, uh, you know, somewhat of an inventory and, and somewhat of, uh, you know, choose your own adventure.
Yeah, but what, what are we actually committing to, or, or is it just the fact we've submitted this cloud of stuff to them and that's?
Well, we said that we've identified opportunities, um, and.
Okay, but what are we actually, what are we actually committing to? I wasn't clear from their regs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the commitment is, is on us to choose, you know, which path, and we can, you know, do multiple things, we, we should be doing multiple things at the same time, so.
So, if, if I can answer, we're not committing to anything. The reality is, uh, if we adopt this, DHCD accepts it, that does not mean we get safe harbor. Until we actually produce, this is a, this gives us a number of strategies that we can follow to produce affordable house, it's subsidi, you know, affordable housing for the subsidized housing inventory, SHI. And, uh, a way to get safe harbor, but the requirements to get safe harbor are to have the plan adopted by DHCD and then to actually produce. We're not committing to passing any zoning change, we're not committed to doing anything that this plan says, but if we don't, then we are in the same place we are now, which somebody can file a forty B, get a letter, and then we have to.
Okay, but my, my, my concern is this plan is not a plan, it is really an inventory of things. So the data about conditions, it's, if, if they have four or five goals, they have a four or five numerical strategies, you know, if you wanna do things as fast as possible. If you wanna do things over a period of ten years, if you wanna do, all of those are possibilities, uh, but they don't seem to help us to narrow down, or they haven't even brought us packages that we could say, we wanna do it over ten years because we're gonna need to do zoning changes. Or we wanna do it ten years because we hope two projects will show up. Are we, do we have to do, narrow it down before we submit it to them? Or we just say, here's this umbrella of stuff and later we'll figure out what to do with it?
That's right, I think it's the latter.
So it's, it's a, it's a, it's really an inventory that we submit to DHCP and then later we figure out how to, how to build an implementable plan?
Yeah, and, and I think that in the past.
That's, that's fine with me, right?
And, and, and these are, you know, these are required in order to go down the path of seeking safe harbor. Um, it's part of the processes, Mariano said that we've gotta do the, uh, housing production plan, identify opportunities, and then actually commit to the housing. I think that they've seen where they haven't been successful in other communities is where they've been too rigid and too specific and, um, and have just focused on very specific opportunities with, which hadn't come to fruition rather than, um, you know, keeping a lot of balls in the air for different.
But I, I'm worried specifically about the section on the quanti, the numbers. They did four or five very good tables, said if you, if you wanted to do it quickly, if you wanted to do it in ten years, if you wanted to do this and such. I mean, the analysis was great, but you can't do all of them at the same time.
So, I mean, that's why I think if we look at strategy.
I mean, we're submitting a plan to them that has five plans within it.
Right, well, so I.
So we have to then come back later and.
So I think, right, I mean, I think if we look at strategy fourteen, uh, which is establish a, um, housing production plan implementation committee, right? And, you know, uh, ensure plan goals are effectively advanced and, um, you know.
So they, they actually have to generate the plan as opposed to.
Did you actually find the page number, please?
No. Um, yeah, page one hundred and three.
Thank you.
So, um, you know, that tasks us, uh, as the lead board, but then, uh, that we would have an implementation committee that would have also members of the planning board. Uh, the, the planning department would be involved, council on aging, school committee, disability access commission, historical commission, and design review committee. Um, so that, uh, implementation committee, um, that would be one of the first things that we would, if, that I would pass it to this board, that, that should be one of the first things that we should do. Um, and that implementation committee will take all of the rest of, first decide, do we want a five-year or a ten-year term to get to ten percent? Um, how are we going to first get safe harbor? And then look at the other, uh, strategies here, there's, uh, twenty-four strategies on the plan, and which strategies, how are we going to align them and when? And of course, then, as time goes on and opportunities for development come up, because that's, it's a, it's a moving, it's, it's not, it's not all going to fit in the parcels that are available today. Right? Uh, it's going to happen over time, and so that implementation committee is very important to be able to, uh, produce, uh, to apply these strategies to parcels that become available, uh, to produce inventory.
Fine, if, if this housing production plan that they're talking about, we're filing, it's really not a plan, it's really an inventory of possible directions and actions and strategies. And if we accept that, we're not actually, it's not actually a plan, it is a filing that says you've done your homework on the issue.
Right, that's, that's exactly.
Yes, yeah, this is the format that DHCD expects, yeah.
And then you have to go ahead to develop a plan. Seems to me like we've spent a lot of effort not to get to the point where we can debate what would might be an implementation plan, but that's my personal.
This is the format that DHCD expects.
Yeah, and I think that's a lot of other communities.
And they'll, they'll accept it, even though it falls a plan, it's not a plan, they'll accept it.
We've, we've looked at, uh, uh, other communities, uh, I know like at Newton's plan is, uh, they spent, they invested a lot more money, a lot more time, it's a very large document. Uh, and it ended up not performing as well for them, uh, because, uh, it was so narrowly focused and so specific. At the end of the day, DHCD doesn't men, they don't care which one of these paths you choose or how many you choose, as long as you hit your number of getting to a certain percentage. So, um, if there's one of these that's works perfectly and we get, you know, our eighty units.
When we, when we file this, we don't have to give them a number, we've got, there's a block, there's a block of tables in there that give us all sorts of different numbers.
Right.
Well, because DHCD gives us different numbers, because DHCD says if you produce half a percent, you get one year of safe harbor, if you produce one percent, you get two years.
But we haven't, but we haven't picked one of those paths, you're saying this implementation committee would be the one that would have to then say, all things considered, we ought to try this path.
Yeah, and, and that's why some of the recommendations for the goals are, you know, short-term, medium-term, ongoing, you know, when we are looking to, uh, amend the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. That will, um, take some time for us to do, but it'll open up some opportunities for us down the road, not immediately, you know?
Yeah, but, but in reading through those twenty-two thousand strategies, I would say that fully two-thirds of them don't really address affordable housing.
Yeah, can we get to that actually?
They could, they could address all sorts of things, yeah.
So, so as, as Ms. Goldson, who's certainly an expert in this area, I am assuming, sort of mentioned, and I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but the way I understood she was sort of identifying your typical plan to reach a safe harbor, um, is a plan that is focused on capital A affordable housing, that counts towards that inventory. So this plan seems to include a lot of topics and a lot of subjects that go to housing in general. And some of those go to increasing inventory for affordable capital A, what counts as affordable housing counts as far as the state formula, but many of them don't. So I guess my overall comment, and this is, I guess, sort of parallel with Lanson's, but really kind of separate, is that I just wonder, um, and this isn't really just rhetorical, it's really a suggestion that can't we have this either split so that there's topics that talk about the safe harbor and the inventory, which I actually thought the plan was focused on? Um, and then other thing, other topics about, um, housing, either have two separate reports or two separate chapters? Because by mixing them all together, I think, um, and I don't mean this in any way disrespectfully, I know there's been a lot of hard work, but I think one of, having worked to some extent in this for four years on the planning board, one of the things that I really strive to do is make sure that everyone knows what we're talking about when. And, um, I think that it's a disservice to people, not anyone on this board, but, but just in general, talking about this, um, area of housing, um, to not clarify what topic we're talking about. So if we're talking about safe harbor and the goal to get our percentage up, which seems like was the impetus for this effort, then it would seem to me that we would want something that's gonna. then it would seem to me that we would want something that's going to focus on what's going to count towards that inventory. And many of the other topics on here, like, and I'm paraphrasing, but like relaxing zoning, ADUs. Is an ADU part of capital A affordable housing?
It can be, yeah, yeah.
Is it today?
No.
No.
Not today.
So why is it?
But that's
That's why I said amend the ADU by law.
To make sure it counts as affordable housing, but
I know, but doesn't
Do you mean create additional opportunity? I mean, one of the one of the differences with Winchester from other communities is that we don't have land or, you know, really a lot of available parcels to identify.
All right, hold on a second. So everybody here has read this report, okay, so, and we know what that terminology is, so. And I and we know that we don't have like ample land that's developable. But an ADU means different things to different people. And to some people, they might be concerned that it means possibly, you know, massively multiplying our density and therefore needing bigger, you know, more schools and having more traffic issues, et cetera, et cetera. So just having that topic there without sort of anchoring it, does it, do they, do they automatically count as affordable housing units? I think the answer is no.
Well, not now, but I guess the broader question is if.
So then why, let me just finish my thought. So then it seems like if we're talking about an inventory, so this has a lot of sort of like a canvas of different tools a community can can consider to have different types of housing, preserve different types of housing, increase different types of housing, all kinds of topics on housing. So and for that in and of itself, it's it's very useful and impressive that it's so comprehensive. But if the point is to pass something that's gonna, if the, those who are have worked so hard on this, want to have some sort of plan that's focused on that getting to 10%, then it would seem to me that you would want a section that focuses on what counts towards that percentage. And all the other things really go to so many broader issues. So there's one topic in here, aside from the
So, let me, before we switch to another topic, can I address the ADU issue very quickly, please? I mean, so the ADU strategy, strategy 16, if anybody's following along at home, it specifically says that the action plan is not to immediately allow ADUs everywhere to to multiply housing opportunities, but part of the action plan, the second bullet in the action plan, is to draft amendments to the ADU by law that reflect real concerns and potential development impact. So that, I mean, what you're saying, yes, you're you're right, there are many concerns about ADUs, but those would have to be addressed. And this is a long term goal, it's not a short term goal that would produce subsidized units immediately.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying, but here's my other general comment is just even verb choice of consider certain things, to consider doing certain things as opposed to doing them. So as has been voiced earlier this evening, particularly regarding the master plan, there was, it seemed like, and maybe it was just being summary, and I'm not holding anybody to any holding anybody to this specific language, but it seemed like the idea was that this was a policy and if this plan is adopted, that that becomes the policy of Winchester. Well, this is a perfect example. So is the policy of Winchester to then, whether it's the, whatever the standard would be for ADU, or this other section about, I think even some of the terminology is, yeah, it says improving the permitting process. Well, what does that mean? That then there can't be people who live nearby who comment on it? Like, who knows what that means? So so considering that is very valid and very valuable. So these topics are certainly important for the community to be talking about. But I think, for one thing, dividing what counts as affordable and what doesn't, as far as the inventory, would be helpful for the reader to know. And then, second of all, particularly those things that maybe don't count, to say, to change the verbs and to be more like, you know, consider reviewing or to consider or to analyze as opposed to doing things.
So, I mean, I I agree, but I mean, so the this, the plan has 116 pages, so you know, I think that maybe we should submit the the like the the editing recommendations in writing, because otherwise we're going to be here for a very long time if we're going to
I do think that there are very specific, you know, I mean, there are, you know, action plans here. I mean, there are concepts and then there are action plans that are built into it. So, you know, when you're looking at addressing the permitting process, you know, it's, you know, the action plan is to draft zoning amendments to improve the permitting process for mixed income housing development. That is a way to create more opportunities that do not exist for us to meet our, you know, our 10%. I mean, that's that is, that's very specific, that is an action.
Okay, that sounds specific, but you are improve the process? Does that mean that no one would be able to comment on it? I mean, who knows? That's what that's worth the point, nobody has done the term of that.
It says, it says, part of that action plan then says, conduct community engagement to build support and form coalitions prior to town meeting. I mean, so that's, it's a community process, so it's certainly, all of these action plans are, you know, they consider community engagement. I mean, that's
Yeah, just would interject a point of information. So is the purpose of your joint meeting on Tuesday night with the planning board is to get some answers to? I mean, you're not adopting the plan on Tuesday night.
Well, it sounded, it sounded like
That was the plan was, so the, so what was communicated to this board in August was the draft is available, please read it, start going through it and submit comments and edits to MAPC and to the plan at Town Planner so that we can incorporate it into the draft. You know, it wasn't that we would go page by page at these meetings.
Considering your your conversation title, don't you think that maybe a good outcome for Tuesday night would be to get a series of tight questions down for consultants on Tuesday night and maybe get some feedback to that?
First of all, what's the magic date of the ninth? I know this is really hard work, but I mean, first of all, I tried to go, I signed up for that online feedback system and for some reason I couldn't link it to this plan. But I I can edit this in in a week and with the suggestion I had, but that's not the point. The point is that you got a lot of comments, which is great. I mean, do you have like 52 drafts? Like, it's it's more than than that, it's like taking comments like this and and figuring out. I'm speaking as a member of this board. So the idea of our comments, the way I understood from our chair and I CC'd everybody else, was are we supposed to put it on there or at our meetings? And I was, the way I understood it was our individual comments on there. Well, I must, I'm a member of the select board and my comments are within that frame of mind with all due respect. So I I just think that misunderstanding would be something that no one who's part of this process would want to have happen. So when I look at this, though, I I just get concerned that this is so comprehensive, which is fantastic, but that when you read it, somebody might have the misimpression that everything here is a tool towards capital A affordable and it just by definition isn't. So is it the purpose of the plan, as Ms. Goldson mentioned, to focus on the safe harbor? And could we split this, it'd be so easy to do, split this into two chapters?
So one one thing is, that's the main focus that towns and that we have taken for SHI, but that's not, so DHCD requires that we also look at 80 to 120%, even if that's not part of the SHI. So a lot of the things that are in here are the format that is required by DHCD. So we can't just say, this is, the only thing we're going to do is produce as much, because they do require it for the format.
Let me, let me, let me
But still, just to be clear, what, what?
Let me split the chair speaker for a minute. Let me suggest something that I think could be done in the relatively short term that would swage my concerns. If DHCD is not concerned about us committing to a specific plan, but to have these paths available.
That's right.
Okay, there's a section in here that it's, let's see, it's listed, it's listed as quantitative goals and I guess
What page?
I'm trying, I can't find on my little screen here, let me find out here, a second. 69 starts on? Okay, they have a section ahead of that that has general goals, which are fine, you know, deal with affordable housing, deal with, you know, 120. When you get to page 69, they have four charts. And if I read them, they're terribly titled, but the first one is effectively, if you want to achieve safe harbor for one year, then you have to build 40 units over the next several years, a year, right?
Twenty-five years.
Yeah. If you want to achieve safe harbor for two years, you have to build at least 79 more each calendar year for the next bunch of years. There's a third issue that says if you want to achieve 10% restricted things in five years, you have to build 129 units a year. And if you want to do it over 10 years, you have to build 64. It would seem to me that each of those represents sort of a policy decision about how fast you want to go or how good. But they're simply laid out as separate paths. What you want to do under each one of those is to say, which of those 24 strategies would be, would you most likely be looking at to get to those kind of numbers? Because each one is going to be quite different, some will be repeating. But that would seem to satisfy the question of laying out paths in a way that's understandable, right? And you can put a separate section over to do the the mid income housing pieces, which is, I think, a separate issue at the moment, it would probably be better taken up under, I mean, if they want to file it, fine, but we need to map those over to the master plan. My concern right now is that this inventory of information right now is not set up so that we as a board or an implementation committee can begin to make choices. Right now, right, right now, we have a blob. This would at least divide it into some paths and the relevant strategies. And I think that would satisfy
The the issue is that it depends so much in what
That's fine.
Parcels are available, that it's it's hard to say
Plays out some paths. We, you know, do we want to, as a group, want to move quickly to 10%? Or do we think it's going to be a very slow process? We have to make some policy decisions at that level, right?
Yeah.
I think what's different in some other communities, why the DHCD has this format, is that if you have town owned land or land that's available to you, say if we said, hey, we're going to put 40 units, we're going to take the Parker School, we're going to put on RFP and we're going to, you know, make that 40 units. We just don't have that flexibility. So I think the implementation, you know, committee is where a lot of those decisions, you know, are where the the rubber hits the road, not on the front end.
So again, if if we've done this inventory, we've sucked up all these ideas. If if all DHCP wants is for us to submit that inventory effectively.
That's right.
And then we go from an implementation committee together to figure out how do you put those things in the paths and which ones do you follow as up, data comes up? That's fine, but I don't, this plan implies that we're committing to something and right now, this isn't. There's there's no plan in the plan, right? I mean, there's 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 opportunities, there's strategies, there're tools, but there's and there's a bunch of objectives.
I don't know what a plan, I don't know what a plan would look like at this point.
How would you implement this?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is the
And right now, right now, we have something that says a plan, it isn't. It's not implementable.
I mean, I think that you're getting caught up in the
In the word plan.
In the word plan.
Yeah, because it says plan and we adopt the plan. We adopt a plan that isn't.
They're not looking for, you know, like, how the, you know, master plan was laid out that in, you know, from December in this year, you're going to do this. And so it's, it, these are, you know, a survey or inventory of opportunities that Winchester has specifically. And then we see where the rubber hits the road at a later date with implementing, implementation committee.
So this this basically is is an inventory that's submitted to DHCD and they say, good, thank you.
They they want to know that we've considered, that we've considered all of these different options that they see as potential housing opportunities.
So we made an inventory and survey and we know all the pieces out there, but we don't really have an implementation plan or strategic plan to get it done yet. That comes
Well, I mean, now we have to, now we have to go look at which strategies we can put in what land is available, right? So in waterfield lot, there's something that can happen there. And privately owned land, there's, we have a lot less control, right?
I understand, I understand, I understand the tactical pieces of it, but at a broader strategic business plan level, what you're talking about is implement, is detailed implementation, they're just doing a survey, there's a missing piece in the middle. And that's your
Well, it's not just a survey, but there's a number of strategies that an implementation committee can put together to reach
It's a toolbox without any directions on which which way you're supposed to go. David?
I share some of the concerns that the chair has and Jackie as well. You know, on the, on the, on the the goals of, you know, 40 to 70 units, you know, just, it's it's my feeling that we're setting ourselves up for failure to some degree. I mean, if you just look back the past 25, 50 years, what have we been able to do? Seems like every time we try to get one unit, it's a, it's World War III. So that's my concern is, you you write these down as goals, but if you don't have a a plan that will be implemented, what's, you know, what does the state look at? How does the, how does the state look at us if we're saying, you know, 40 to 70 units, we're seeking safe harbor, but I'm just
So, just to be clear, 40 or 79 units is not a goal that we're setting, that's the law, right? So if you don't believe that that can be produced, then we can, then we can just let developers come in to a huge 40B. That's that's what you're saying.
But what happens to us if we don't get 40 to 70?
Then 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 we get, then we don't get safe harbor.
That's it.
Then developers can do 40Bs.
That's the only thing.
That's the way it's been for for 50 to 75 years, so.
And people don't like it, that's why we did a housing production.
Right.
Right.
But this doesn't, we're not going to get arrested.
People maybe don't like hostile 40Bs in general as a concept, doesn't mean that they agree with all 110 pages of this plan. So you have to be very careful, this is where people live.
That's not what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed something.
You did.
So, all right, so that was on the chairs. And then, you know, what Jackie was talking about, again, I I I've got some concerns, especially on the ADUs. I I look at that as a game changer to the character of Winchester if we start going down the that path.
The plan doesn't say that we would do that. This is a number of strategies.
It's not amend the ADU by law.
Yeah, it's in there.
That would have to go through a town meeting.
I know, but, excuse me, it, some of this maybe is terminology and I'd be happy to put words like consider in here. I could do that in 48 hours, if you'd like me to, I volunteer. But so on page 87, it says amend the ADU by law, it doesn't say consider doing it, it says do it. So rather than the, you know, having resident feedback and all that, you know, and and also how, there's like about a thousand ways you can do that. Right, some towns have affidavits every year, some don't, you know, et cetera. So and then just to have that in there, just to highlight on one example, which is the one that I mentioned before, because as of today, that's not capital A affordable anyway. So I don't even understand why it's in the report. No due respect, no disrespect intended to anybody. But if if the idea, that's why, you know, not to be repetitive, but that's why I think it'd be more useful to have the sort of like, you know, highlight the ones that are going to count towards the inventory, those options, maybe, you know, have something that seems like an actual, like target or whatever. And then have, hey, here's some other things that communities consider doing. And it's basically just working with what this is and just making a few modifications.
Right now, right now, the language in this says Winchester can achieve safe harbor in the short meeting terms by taking the following steps and this, for the different, you know, 40, 79, and so on like that. But as worded, it's not committing us to that, we're just filing a plan that says
Right, it's not committing anything.
We're filing a document that says these are possible paths.
And again, where it says, where the header, where it says under regulatory strategies, it does say amend the ADU by law. And then under action plan, it it says, conduct community conversations about ADUs, draft amendments, conduct community engagement, potentially partnership with regional ally like MAPC, CHAPA, and and form coalitions prior to town meeting. It doesn't say we're going, you know, straight to jail. You know, it is, this is a strategy for community engagement about ADUs.
Can I, can, hold on, yeah, hold on, Jackie, can I?
But this becomes a policy, as Mariano said earlier, and so that way, anytime somebody suggests
I didn't say it becomes a policy. Can I address one of your concerns, if I understand it correctly? So you want to have these these strategies have it noted, which ones are for, specifically for subsidized housing inventory and which ones are for something else?
More general.
More general, because if if
I'm just suggesting that
If that's the case, no, no, if that's the case, I, so I'd, the implementation plan, the table at the end, so after all of the goals has six goals there, right? And and it's hard, you know, they are in vertical there and columns. And goal number three, I'm sorry, goal number four is increased
I'm sorry, what page?
Um, so in the page 100, although if you have it printed from, yeah. So goal number four is increased affordable housing for lower income households. So that would be goal number four, so those would be the ones that would go
I'm sorry, engage and partner with housing developers on page 100?
No, no, in the columns, the column at the top of the table, in vert- vertical writing.
Okay, yeah, it says engage and partner with housing developers number four.
Yes, it says expand supply of
It is right here. Goal number four, increase affordable housing for lower income households, right?
Yeah.
You see the 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 column heading?
Implementation plan on page 99? Yeah, oh, I see.
Yeah, right, and, right, 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 and each strategy
Right, okay.
Has marked with an X what would be that, right? So that, those would be the things that, you know, if we're looking specifically for SHI, those are the things that, to look at. For example, commit suitable public land to housing, like the waterfield, that has that marked. But ADUs, which is strategy number, was it sixteen?
Thirteen, actually fifteen.
Uh, doesn't have that marked, right? So this clearly delineates which strategies would be to increase subsidized housing inventory.
But is that, I understand what you're saying, I heard you, I understand how that works. But you have to get to page a hundred to, to understand that, and you have to have read all of this that arguably sounds like mandated language before you get to that. So I would just suggest that for clarity, that it be, you know, depending on, on who's reading this, I'm assuming this is a community document, as the master plan folks said, they'd be sort of integrating some of this potentially in the master plan. And I don't know why that can't be on page eighty-seven, for example, in that ADU bylaw section to say, you know, something to that effect. This won't impact the inventory whatsoever, or whatever, unless it, unless a bylaw, I guess it would have to get approval by the state if it.
Could, I mean, if, it could if, if ADUs were de-restricted, but, I mean, that's.
I just think everything should be just very clear what it is, and so that way, I honestly think if, it may help lead to more success, because then people would be focused on, you know, as opposed to, you know, like twenty-five things, which maybe are fine to focus on in general. If the purpose is to try to increase the inventory, like what is the purpose of this plan, if that's the primary purpose?
Well, I think part of the purpose is also, is to not narrow it down so much that then, for some reason, those strategies don't work out in three years to produce another forty units, and then, you know, we don't have in the planned strate, I mean, of course, we could amend it then, but we have all the strategies now here, and then the implementation committee is going to have to figure out what works and what it, what they, what can be used based on the land that is available for development at the time.
Use could, you know, that's, that's a really important topic that people would have a wide variety of opinions about, and there might have to be an incremental kind of discussion about it. It came up with the plan more often.
I, yeah.
So something where that's treated just with the same kind of ink level, you know, a page and a half or a page, as everything else, it just sort of jumps out as what is the purpose of this report? And, and I just think it's concerning and could lead to a lot of maybe assumptions that that's an automatic policy of the town, when a lot of people won't have weighed in on that.
That's all, just to, again, I'll say it again, ADUs would dramatically affect the character of Winchester. I don't, I don't know if the general public.
And you can voice that opinion, you know, even if you're not on the select board, at one of the community meetings.
I don't know if people understand what, what that really entails.
Well, that's why the action plan, it builds into this recommendation, this strategy,
Yeah.
very heavy community engagement, so there's an opportunity for that conversation.
And this one doesn't say we're going to go pursue ADUs, right? I mean, that's not.
That's the ADU bylaw, so I would.
That's one of the strategies that are available to communities to increase affordable housing. That doesn't mean that we are going to go and approve ADUs. We, I mean, that's not in the short-term future for town meeting to, what?
We're getting on the twibbling over this. What, what I'm.
Because we're not, I mean, we're not bringing, the planning board is not bringing zoning change to town meeting.
It says it right there, within the second page.
Where it says amend the ADU bylaw?
It says medium term, it says timeframe, right? And then it goes into the steps that would have to be taken. And I think having community engagement is, is, is one of those, going to town meeting, building coalitions. I mean, that's obviously not something that we vote this, and then all of a sudden, there is uniform ADU zoning requirements throughout the town. I mean, it just, it's with any planning documents, they are ultimately strategies with the master plan.
It'd be really easy to just add a few verbs in here and I'd be happy to do it, which is some things like consider, for things that don't immediately impact that inventory, and I think it would help the raw usefulness.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, and that's why we're having this. So if you, if you can, if we can discuss that, like if you have it written down, that way we can discuss that.
But, but I think the issue of wording those, if I've understood what you're saying, what you've got here is a whole set of things that could be done.
Yes.
None of them are in fact mandated.
None of them are.
And so it's not really a plan that you're adopting, it is, again, an inventory of things you could do, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you could adopt for you.
Which won't affect the inventory, or affordable.
Well, some could.
Well, what, what, what I read it as, is an inventory of things you could do in terms of goals, of numerical objectives and strategies, none of which are packaged in any organized set yet, but they could be used at this point to both include your affordable inventory as well as your, you know, middle income or middle housing range, workforce housing, right? Right now, it's a grab bag of everything.
Just as a point of information, could we please not use that word workforce housing? Because, no offense to you, but I think it's very arrogant. I think that most people work, and those who don't work, work in other ways. So it's not on you, but if we could just not use that word, would be great.
Allow me to finish the sentence. I think the whole discussion of a plan implies that we're actually committing to these things and that there are applied policies to be executed. I don't know if they'll accept different titling on it, but the front thing out of this basically say this is an inventory of things that could be done. Because it sounds very much like we submitted, they say, great, you've considered all the possibilities, and we are in fact, haven't got any policy packages that we could adopt, and we haven't really begun to follow, follow any of these paths. That has to come as a second step. You have an implementation committee, I, I just, I mean, not, the wording of the individual strategies could be changed, but the whole package is in fact just a good inventory of what you could do, right?
That's exactly it, and I, and I do think that DHCD has an interest, so if we are looking at getting forty units to get to our half a percent in the first year, and we get to thirty-four units, and they see that we've taken some of these additional steps that don't necessarily produce units right away, like, you know, the passing the CPA or something like that, then I think that they're going to know that we're working hard towards the goal of increasing affordable housing and will stay with us and potentially allow us to be in safe harbor for that period if we show that there's a path.
I think we've heard that in discussions of mass housing.
It's just all sheer numbers, when they're not capital A.
I think we heard very clearly from DHCP and, and mass housing in earlier discussions of, for example, the forest circle stuff, that if you're making progress, if you have the plan in place and you're making progress, you know, lean backwards. If you have a hostile forty B project come in, they will.
But making progress on affordable housing.
On affordable housing, whether it's, you know, you don't make forty, you're making twenty, you're making thirty.
Right, but there's another thing, which is, so having a, a housing production plan that is accepted by DHCD is also the first step on being able to get grants for, for technical assistance. So, and there's a second step also, which, the second step can be a number of things. There's, there's like three or four different options for what the second step is. And all of those options are in this plan, and we could implement one of those. And then we are, we would be eligible for even larger grants for develop, for technical assistance and development. So even beyond just producing the numbers, there's other advantages to, to having the plan in place, because it, we can get statement.
Does the plan have to include all of these items? Because it sounded like what Ms. Goldson was saying was that, that what she seemed to be indicating was that most housing, maybe I misunderstood her, but was that most of these plans focus on affordable housing, capital A, to reduce the inventory to get the safe harbor, period.
Some of these are density.
Yeah, driven not affordable.
Density driven, not affordable, you know. And if, if I could, again, one of the concerns I have, when we had Ms. Goldson here, you know, when I brought up the subject of other conflict between this plan and the master plan, she had said, well, if it's, it's a new plan, we would consider that probably as an accepted policy by the town, so that's.
We could tell we haven't got one yet.
Again, so just, I was just raising the point about, you know, what, what's in here could be accepted as policy that would go into our master plan. And right now, again, I look at this as, you know, there's some very good plans and strategies for affordable housing, but it's the density, density driven plans that I would have concerns on, especially the, the ADU.
Yeah, but keep, keep in mind two things.
I mean, so I guess.
Keep in mind two things. What goes into a master plan is just words, it is not enforceable in the state of Massachusetts. Whatever you say in the master plan, it's a community consensus.
So both of these.
In the same way, they're both called a plan.
Paperweights, right?
I, I think that we just need to change our idea of what a plan is in the public policy realm.
Well, this is, this is not a plan, I mean, they call it that for their purposes, but for us, it's spending a lot of money for.
It's a, it's a document that DHCD requires in order for you to get there. But, so can I just say a suggestion to it? So, not that you're spinning your wheels, yeah? It's all good conversation, but you got the meeting on the ninth, where you think you want to vote, right? I'm just saying, that's the plan.
Yeah, I mean, the longer we take, the longer we are, we are subject to forty Bs, right?
All I was going to suggest is, is there anything, based upon what you all heard tonight from each other, that you think you could do, say, Monday on the first, to vet concerns, objections, suggestions, editorial or otherwise, that you could take up Monday, yeah, by looking at it between now and then, so that you're ready, if the plan is, the preferred plan is to vote it on the ninth, you have the first to continue to voice these things? Or is, is it the suggestion, the suggestion by DHCD that you actually comment online? Or do you think you all could take it up, you could take up a number of suggestions?
If we're voting on it, then I would suggest that you don't have to just comment online.
No, it wouldn't be a vote.
I, I envision, I envision some, some substantial debate, you know, and discussion with the planning board.
When, when, when do you, on the ninth though, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, if, and if we need to go beyond that, why, why rush into something?
Well, if we're not rushing to it, I mean, I think that we have a contract with MIPC that expires at a certain point where we can contribute, you know, more funds if we want to keep on having discussions. But, but, but it, it will, you know, it will push back our ability to reach safe harbor and move forward with the plan.
Would we need them, like if we had a, like a looking session with the planning board on the ninth, and then we had another date a couple of weeks after, as a potential kind of see where people stand? And even if the contract expired with MIPC, I mean, they're not part of our vote, no offense.
They're putting the plan together.
I understand that, but.
Doesn't mean you can.
Right, there's.
So I just don't understand, like, how we get to it, to vote this? Because the plan has been in front of everybody on this table for six weeks, and.
Excuse me, just for the record, this is the first time it's been on the agenda, and I'm asked ever since the very beginning of September that it be on our agenda, so I don't think that's really constructive for you to keep talking.
No, my point is, how do we get to, because I don't, what I'm trying to get to is what the process is going to be for getting the edits that everybody wants, because discussing them here, I, I mean, I think that we need to have whatever edits you have in mind, whatever is a problem in writing, what, what edits you would want, and then we can discuss those and vote them. I'm not sure that trying to edit by here, talking without something in writing is, is going to get us to plan. That's all, that's, that's my.
That's how, that's how, that was our first sort of variant, and so.
In listening to the discussion, and we can cut this, I think you could begin to deal with this upfront by basically, you know, it says, the HPP positions the town to meet its obligations under Mass, blah, 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 blah. Such it contains the following components, housing needs assessment based on data, population, fine. Assessment of regulatory and non-regulatory constraints, fine, that's inventory. Identification of residential development opportunities in town, fine, that's been done. This is housing goals, strategies for achieving these goals, I mean, basically, that, as I say, that's housing goals, strategies for potentially achieving these goals, and there's no, and, and possible routes to implementation. And this basically, as far as I can figure, doesn't commit us.
Yeah, I mean, if you read the sentence right before that.
How else we can say that, yeah.
So, so, so let me finish. So maybe what we need up in the front of this thing is a statement that says, you know, this, basically it says it meets these goals, it doesn't commit us to it, but the next steps would be to put together an implementation committee to consider how to improve these. Because I think all of these basically are ideas that you could use, but they, the whole thing doesn't commit to anything.
There's strategies, but they're, they're based on data and they're based on.
I'm just, I'm just talking about, what's the intent of this plan? Does it commit us to do something, or does it simply give us tools to do something?
Can I read, it says, the goals and strategy in this plan will guide Winchester's housing efforts.
Yeah, but that implies that they're goals that have been adopted as policy.
Exactly.
No, guide.
It does, because of, some people think that, like ADUs, for example, just because it's an easy example, that some towns have done, have expanded that in a very specific way for certain, like, say, households with disabilities, and they require an affidavit every year, I mean, there's like about a thousand ways to do that. And like having, you know, full participation and thinking that out, and also, of course, it's two-thirds on the vote at town meeting for zoning. And then to just sort of have it here that sort of seems like a guide, it's almost like presupposes that it's,
Yeah, I think you're beating that.
That some cookie cutter version is already agreed to.
I think you're beating that a little too hard. I think most of this basically says, here's things you could consider, and maybe we ought to reinforce that. It doesn't commit us to doing that.
Respectfully, I disagree with you, okay?
Okay, well, I've read the thing through in quite some time.
Well, you know what I did too, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's take this up again in the next session.
Well, I think Arianna brings up an excellent point, that what, you know, if we're, if we're trying to move to any sort of certain place, what happens? But I mean, what happens with all that feedback you guys got, like, did you guys integrate that, or like, because?
Yes.
Yes.
So that, so this manifests all that so far?
Yes, the one that came out today, yes.
Okay, I mean, have you guys, you know, this conversation, I think, is really constructive and helpful, and it's the first one that the board has had on this. So, I mean, I, I, I'm completely happy anytime to, based on this conversation, and I can even talk to Lance about some of his comments, to come up with something that, you know, is, would just be a convers, conversation piece for our next meeting, if that would be helpful. But I, you know, didn't want to advance that necessarily until we had this conversation, so.
Yeah, I, I looked at this as our first joint discussion, and it being on the, the agenda.
Of course, I don't know what the Housing Production Plan Committee would think of that, or what the planning board would think of that, but I mean, my whole view is just to kind of separate out what counts right now towards the inventory, and what's a tool that's possible, and then to change some of the verbs to consider, so, and I'd be happy to do that, for consideration.
If the primary, if the primary purpose of this is to meet their regulatory requirement that we have done the inventory and submitted it, without actually committing us to actually any one of the individual strategies or goals, then maybe we ought to say that upfront and, you know.
That's fair.
Say, because, because I think, you know, if it's a check off the box, they want to see we've done the inventory, let's do it.
Yeah, we can put that in the narrative.
And we need to put it right up on the front. This, the report itself is.
Yes.
The report itself is, in my opinion, sort of not very well written and constructed, but if it's basically an inventory, that's what it is.
Well, in addition to what you just said, I still think it would be useful with some of them to use verb, verbs like consider.
Well, and why don't you propose a change?
I'd be happy to.
I, I just don't want to be, you know, stuck in a, a semantic discussion, you know, for months on end. You know, we have a, a goal here, you know, with the housing production plan, and, you know, I think that we've had a lot of community engagement. We've had, you know, meetings, we've had, you know, open forums, we've had stakeholder meetings. I mean, it's, I think, the, the sooner that we get to work on producing housing, the better.
But this doesn't.
But that's not mutually exclusive, I mean.
It is.
Yes, you have to do this first.
That's the first.
No, but we're doing it every day, trying to figure out what will happen.
But it doesn't count until we have the plan adopted first.
Yeah, but any affordable housing, what we just did tonight necessitates that.
But it doesn't count towards safe harbor until we have the housing plan.
But it counts towards our inventory number.
Right, but we're not going to get to ten percent, one unit at a time.
To our inventory number.
Well, no, no.
No, but it doesn't count towards the half a percent, the forty units that we have to do to get a one-year safe harbor from getting forty B letters, right? That's the issue.
If you, if you need to, if you need to produce forty units, so you're here to get there, and you only produce twenty, you'll get twenty credits for twenty, but you cannot then go to DHCP and ask for safe harbor consideration because you're making progress toward forty, without this thing filed there.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
So.
And we can't say, last year we got twenty units, and we're going to add it in, and only do twenty this year, you know?
But, yes, if that unit got us to ten percent, then we're done. I mean, there is no safe harbor, because then we're at ten percent, right? But because it doesn't, then we need to have this plan in place. But, because it doesn't, then we need to have this plan in place first, before we start counting that forty units for the half a percent.
This is a regulatory threshold, not anything.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, rewording suggestions, maybe a paragraph up front that spells out, spells out.
I think that makes sense, even, even something that came from the board as a whole.
Diplomatic language that says, you know, hey, this is a great inventory, we're prepared to go and put an implementation committee together.
Well, I'd be happy to start that, and I could, we're meeting Wednesday?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Is it, did we say we're meeting Wednesday?
Yes.
Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, I know this wouldn't be on the agenda, but I could try to at least put something.
You could just disseminate it.
Yeah, that, you know, obviously, people would need to look at it, and then, um, we can talk about it on Monday or something.
Okay.
If not Wednesday, maybe later in the week, but I'll target for Wednesday. But Lance, I'll, maybe reach out to you, because you had a few specific points as well.
Sure, we can do it, yeah. Okay.
And then, obviously, since Mike and Mariano are on the committee, you guys wanna look at it as well as everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, throughout that discussion, we're closed. We're on right of that one. Uh, we have a consent agenda, let's not forget that, as I did last time.
Yeah. No, we approved it last time. Yeah.
No, I almost forgot it.
Oh, I almost forgot.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Mariano had to kick me under the table, we just moved it over here for that one.
Move that we approve one day alcoholic beverage licenses for Diana Kenosian, Boston Space Bartending, November third, twenty eighteen, at Town Hall. For Laura Lewis for Essex Catering, October seventh, twenty eighteen, Rite Lock Farm. Amy Renskoff for Rite Lock Farm Conservancy, September thirtieth, twenty eighteen, at the eighteen twenty seven barn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those names, aye, seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Winchester Girl Scouts request to use Borgard Beach Friday, October twelfth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Chairman, I move that we approve the Winchester Recreation Department request to close Mount Vernon Street for Halloween Horror Boys Parade, October twenty seventh, twenty eighteen.
Can we join?
Second.
Second of, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 unanimous.
Sir Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, the Veterans Day Parade, Sunday, November eleventh, twenty eighteen, for the parade route, as customary.
Uh, second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, do we wanna do the minutes tonight?
They're all, they're there.
Okay, so one thing is, I had two copies of the June fifteenth meeting, uh, I didn't see any changes, but are they the same? Is it just a printing? Okay, okay.
They're the same, you just, yeah, you just got lucky.
All right, that's fine.
I did prove it.
And I just, because I had to go away for this funeral, I just, um, wanna make sure that whatever edits I.
You already have them, sure, and done.
Yeah, I just always like to eyeball that, so if it can be handed in.
I didn't get very changed anyhow, in touch, except for, um, layout.
Okay. Okay.
Sir Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the meetings of June eleventh, twenty eighteen, June twelve, twenty eighteen, June thirteenth, twenty eighteen, June fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and Monday, June twenty fifth, twenty eighteen.
Okay, one second. Okay, uh, we included the comments that you guys made, uh, Jackie and I went over them several times.
I just wanna double check it one more time, get everything got in, but maybe not.
Yes.
So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those names, aye, seven.
Yep.
I cross checked it.
Okay.
I just think I'd like to, I'll just.
Okay, four one on that, acceptance of those minutes.
Did, did we want, did, did, did you wanna make it?
Was there a certain date?
What's that?
Certain date?
For what?
Um, for your vote. Should we do the minutes by date? That's what you need to do on the board.
Yeah, well, we usually do it as a packet, but if there are any exceptions.
I mean, would that?
Do you object to?
Is there any specific date that you object to?
Uh, no.
Okay, so it stands, okay.
All right.
Um, so we're gonna meet, uh, I'm trying to go ahead of mine.
Yeah, just one thing, you'll see some, uh, letters at the table here regarding the cemetery gate on Chesterford Road East. So, I, um, I heard about this from, uh, the, went over there and checked it out, so there.
Now, it's FYI, everybody got in the packets, that wasn't that thing?
Yep. Oh, oh, it was in the packet, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Um, and, um, so if, if you kind of read over, um, those letters and the correspondence there, you'll see, uh, and some of the, the pictures there. There were, uh, at one time, we had put a gate at the end of Chesterford Road East, which is a private road. That, um, gate is in severe disrepair, and, um, what I would, uh, call, uh, an attractive nuisance, um, as a lawyer, I don't know, it's, um, it leads to a path to the cemetery that many, um, kids access. So, I think we've gotta do a couple of things. One thing is just take down the existing fence, um, and then, or at least ask the town manager to take down, uh, to direct D W to do it. And, um, and then, at a later point, make a decision on whether we, um, we put it back. It used to be.
This is a pedestrian or auto access?
It's pedestrian, it's, it's really just a path through the woods that is not. Um, you probably couldn't even get through on a bike, you know, it's probably a, you know, walking, you know, pathway. But the, um, it had, we used to lock the, the cemetery at, uh, a certain period at night, and we, we don't any longer. So I think at some point, there was, uh, kind of a reason to keep a fence there, but, um, now there really isn't. There's open access to this cemetery twenty-four seven, um, and it really is a, um, beautiful community asset, and I think that, many of the members of the Cemetery Advisory Group had, um, really wanted to open that space up to the community. So, um, uh, with that said, um, I, I don't know if we need to reach the decision tonight, whether or not that that needs to be gated, but we probably should at least ask the town manager to, um, direct D W to remove the fence as it exists, and get us some information on what it would cost to replace it, um, and then we can make a choice whether or not we thought that was, uh, advisable.
Okay, so maybe keep it in the direction.
Just might understand, it sounds like, you know, this is a really important piece of correspondence, so are you saying that maybe we should just have it be one entrance?
I think you're saying take the fence down.
Yeah, take the gate down.
And it's a very, it's a very, um, you know, uh, if you're familiar with the road, there are, I think, seven houses on it, the, um, I think the majority of the neighbors have sent something in saying that they would like it to be open without a fence there, had we liked that at one point.
Okay.
So, um, and, uh, but we used to lock the cemetery, now we don't, that's the only gate to the cemetery, it's just kind of weird, and it's, um.
Any input from cemetery, with Don Ryerson, or?
Yes, so whenever everybody's ready.
I should, yeah.
So, uh, I, I did meet with Mr. Hannan on this, who is in email and registered as concerned about the fact that the gate was open, and, and his recall, uh, was traditionally closed and locked. And he was asking that it be put back to that condition, uh, concern about, uh, activity of his neighbors with respect to the fence and the, you know, the condition of the gate. So I confirmed with Mr. Gill that, yes, in fact, that particular gate was always in a locked condition, so I said, until further notice, uh, restore it to the locked condition. But then, I, I did have concerns about the overall condition of the fencing and the gate. And that simultaneously, um, Mike brought forward, uh, the concern of other neighbors along the same lane, private way, Chesterford, to, um, have it be available and accessible for the public. At least at the location where our property meets the private way. What people's rights over the private way would be is, uh, something that's not our jurisdiction. That's a different matter entirely, but as it relates to where the two properties are joined, we could certainly either have the gate closed, and installed, and a new one installed and closed, or we could, um, just remove what is clearly, uh, substandard, uh, infrastructure at this point, this gate and the fence around it, and then decide the board, and wait until.
We dealt with a similar question some, couple, three, four, five years ago, I think, and the question was, should the main gate be closed? For all gates be closed, and I think the consensus of that board at that time was no. One, because the, Mr. Gill, I believe, advised us that the main gate there off Palmer Street, uh, they couldn't close without rusting the, rusting.
Fracturing.
Fracturing, cracking the space in there. Uh, we talked with the police about it at the time, and I think they also suggested that it, they didn't see that as a the idea was, could you keep people out of the thing at night? They thought that was supposed to be not very effective, and it would not, would make it difficult for them to cruise through. Uh, and it would also cost us somebody to be able to go there every night and unlock it and unlock it, and things like that, so. At the time, the consensus was leave it open, and I don't think that, um, we discussed this gate at all. I don't think we even paid any attention to it, so maybe we go back and revisit that, isn't it?
I did happen about into Mr. Ryerson, right around the same time I was getting the feedback from the local resident and Mr. Gill, and Mr. Ryerson, I think, would be of the opinion that it should stay open, but he understands that it's the board that makes the decision about this board that makes the decision about accessibility.
Yeah, you got some, get some sense of the cost for closing it or opening it, and making sure that it's only pedestrian, so cars can't drive in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that there is, they, they certainly, you know, they, you definitely can't, so, um.
Can't fit very far. Okay, so it's not an issue of baller.
It's not into that, and I, and I don't think this is the kind of road that all of a sudden would, um, get increased traffic based on the gate being open. I mean, it is, um, uh, you know, it's very small, and it's a, and it's a private way in the sense that it doesn't meet our zoning requirements, not in the sense that it is not open to vehicular traffic, so you're not.
So it's a public right of way, then?
Yes.
The street isn't.
Public access, public private street.
The street is a private way. We just have, it appears as though, since our property runs up to the back end, we have access. We haven't researched that legally, you know, whether we have a right to pass the, we, the town.
Yeah.
Uh, in the form of the cemetery, um, ownership have a right to pass and repass over Chesterford, but I would assume that there's access.
Yeah, we, we do have a hydrant there, we have a, um, you know, sewer, um, drainage infrastructure, so, um, you know, I think it's.
Okay, so there is a public right of way, then?
Yes.
I mean, if there's sewer infrastructure.
Or maybe an easement below ground.
Oh, okay.
Richard, I get, I guess I'm confused. If we're gonna leave it open.
Yeah.
It's an ugly eyesore, well, why, why can't we just get rid of it?
They could.
I think we, we will.
Yeah, be up to, oh, I guess the point I would make to the board is whether or not the, the neighborhood private way controversy is enough for you to hear from, uh, you know, would, would you want me to give notice to the owners of?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to say, you're considering a change of circumstance and leaving it open, uh, permanently.
Yeah, I think we should take it down the way that it is now, though.
Yeah, it's, it's a hazard the way it is now. I didn't, when I, uh, inquired of J I, really didn't focus on.
Looks like there's a tree leaning on it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tree that crushed it.
How far does the fence go? So it's, it's a?
Goes off to the sides.
It doesn't actually go, you can even get around the fence from the other properties, so.
It's tough to walk into the woods.
So what is it, like, about thirty yards of fencing or something?
Probably, yeah, that's probably fair.
But it's not like it's the whole park, right?
Not the whole.
Well, it once was, but it's deteriorated badly over the years, and by now, they're replacing it, and so.
Yeah, it has barbed wire facing, you know, on, in the interior to keep, I guess, to keep people from getting out.
Yeah, a lot of people get, they're, they're, they're just getting in.
So, I mean, if it's a hazard, if it's a safety hazard, and that, then I would say, let's remove the gate now, and then, you know, figure out, talk to the neighbors and figure out what to do, but let's not spend money putting a new gate before we.
Well, I'll make a decision on it tonight, because it's not a business plan, that we bring it up and ask, you know, what would it cost to get rid of it?
I can find that out.
Uh, what would it cost to replace it, and what does the Cemetery Commission appear to?
Well, to get rid of it, I think our crews would just take it up.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just, I mean, just, you know, sort of short, what are our options, and, and then do we wanna hear?
Cost to the options.
Put it on the agenda, do you wanna hear from people in the neighborhood?
I think we should notice the neighbors and have them speak, like, they, they, you know, submitted their, um, you know, signed, uh, letter.
Yeah, definitely.
But I think, uh, having, you know, an open discussion here is helpful, but I, I will underscore, I mean, I do think it's a liability to leave it in, in the way that it is currently.
Such poor conditions.
So there's, there's no decision that I think the board will reach, which will leave the current fence in its state, so, um.
And I would tend to agree with that.
Right, I mean, it looks like a safety, and probably kids walk through it every day to go through, to the high school, right, to walk, uh?
Yeah, I think the final word is rusty and spiked and barbed, it's bad news.
Yes, put it on the agenda like you said, and get it up.
You want it for neighborhood input, and for October first, October fifteenth?
When's our next meeting?
I'm looking at be a long, a long debate, hopefully.
Well, you, you may have neighbors that feel intensely about it.
So, there, I think there's two things. One is fix the immediate safety concern.
But if we tear it.
Well, fix it means.
True, but if we tear it down, they're gonna say, well, you've de facto done it without listening to us.
No, well, also do we hearing it, then, we're just supposed to hear in front.
Well, I mean, we would have to replace it, if we were to put a new gate, we would have to replace that.
Yeah, we put seven.
Okay, so.
I mean, it wouldn't be.
So, Corinda, we need sometime to mail stuff to people who have Spins on the fifteenth.
That's what I'm asking. That's usually.
I don't know how long it takes, how do we have to, we're not calling a formal hearing, we're just noticing people?
Yes, meeting is, uh.
Ten one or ten fifteen, or ten nine?
Yeah, ten one's fine.
Ten one, but we're just noticing, we're notifying people not, not posting a public hearing.
That's a week from time.
Yeah, so we need two weeks.
Yeah, because that's next week, that's not enough time to notice people.
There's no rule that you need, I mean, you're just giving them the courtesy of letting them know you have it, you know?
So I suggest we notify people and put it on the fifteenth, does that make sense?
Well, that's good.
Notify, notify, would you in what?
Well.
A public hearing.
Not, well, not, not a hearing, well.
You have it on the agenda.
On the agenda, public notice, you're, you're gonna take the issue up on the agenda.
It's the whether or not to keep.
On the fifteenth, if you can attend and.
No.
Place the infrastructure and keep it locked.
Whether or not we're going to, right, replace the gate, or.
Or rip it out, rip it out completely.
Well, I think we need to fix the safety concern before the fifteenth.
I, I don't, it, it sounds like a safety concern, but there's been no safety problems mentioned, it's been there for years, I think we can wait a week until we if you rip it out, the neighbors who are, want to have the gate back in, they're gonna say, you've already made the decision without our input. And I understand it looks bad, but I don't think there's.
I, I think there's only one neighbor that opposes it.
That's fine, but we, but we're gonna, but we wanted to hear him, you said, so let's hear him on the fifteenth, and sixteen, and rip it out.
They oppose what?
Yeah.
They oppose making the access available, right?
So we can rip it out on the sixteenth, but we'll hear him on the fifteenth and see what consensus is, make a decision, and then do it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Now, they, there's some pricing to meet there.
Okay, uh, any further issues, otherwise we have a list of things for first, so.
And then, just looking ahead on the ninth, we have the joint meeting, and is that at seven thirty, the joint meeting? In which case, we'd have our own main heads existing, possibly?
It says, it doesn't, it doesn't say, um, I believe it is, uh, it's a regular planning board meeting, and then it was listed as.
Joint meeting.
Uh, on the ninth, and I don't have it written down, I'll have to find it, so, I don't believe.
Okay, we'll find out.
Well, let's see if the town, uh, if it's posted.
But at any event, we may have our own business, like, um, worn articles or whatever.
That night, you could have a license, you could, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
One-day licenses.
It's not on the calendar yet.
It's not on the calendar.
Whatever, I just thought I'd highlight that if we wouldn't, we don't have.
This, this requirement, this requirement that we not post anything on the calendar until we have an agenda is, I think, very ineffective, uh, 'cause I went looking for dates that we could meet, and none of our meetings are posted because, future dates, because we haven't.
No agenda.
No agenda yet. I think there ought to be a way to put a dummy agenda up, to say, be filled, I think this is.
It could have these topic headings without the specifics.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I, I think the way we're doing it, I, I understand it's a very strict interpretation by the town clerk, but I think it's doing us a disfavor, because you can't look at October.
Right, well, we know we'll always have matters from the audience and licenses.
Have we had, I mean, it just seems like, just to put up a, a dummy one seems like it's, uh.
And why do we even have to post?
It violates the spirit of it, but.
Why can't we post the meeting as a prospective meeting, and then fill it in a week ahead of time, the agenda is.
Can we have, you know, our, we not just, you know, curious?
I think we should get an opinion on that, 'cause I think it's been adopted as practice by the town clerk on her reading, and it may be correct, but I think that, it means you, you look at the calendar and you can't see who's meeting when, because nothing's posted. I mean, it's the problem we're talking about earlier this evening.
Yeah.
So maybe we just make a discreet info.
It's the whole reason I haven't been able to get to the gym lately, too.
But it's like a disservice to town residents who might want to come to our meetings and don't even know if we have one.
I mean, reserve the, hold the date sort of posted, that'd be sufficient, so, okay, I'll follow up.
So do we have, we have things assigned?
Uh, I don't believe, no, I don't know.
Before we do that, can we?
So, uh, let me call.
So I, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recess the meeting to Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, at eight thirty AM, to finish items, at eight AM?
Eight AM.
Eight AM.
And to finish items that are on this agenda.
Okay, five, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well.
I second that.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.